Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock and time to get started. So if you'll take your seats and sit next to someone you like, that will make the meeting go a little better. The January 20th, 2016 meeting of the City Council is hereby called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable, Channel Two, and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box can view this meeting on digital channel 69.9. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be broadcast, rebroadcast on KCLV Channel Two and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 4:30 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with the marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner of the street from the City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public, for public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the city clerk's office, or at the rear of chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today that has a need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by the security officers in the lobby when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Chaplain Sanford Marks from the Interfaith Council of Southern Nevada, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please join me in prayer in whatever way you feel necessary. Dear Father, we meet today to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to make decisions that promote the common good. Help us recognize the responsibilities of the future of our community and the rights of all its citizens. As trusted representatives, we seek your blessings on our deliberations and our efforts here today. May we act wisely, distinctly, and impartially. Bless us, dear Father, and bless the great city of Las Vegas. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will proceed with our ceremonial portion on the floor. What a great-looking crowd. We will excuse Mayor Carolyn Goodman as she is representing the city of Las Vegas in Washington, DC at the Conference of Mayors. You're doing fine. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and our first item, I would like to invite our Planning Director and Sustainability Officer Tom Perrigo up here with us. Where'd Tom get to? Tom, come on up here. Give him a round of applause just because we love him. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for Achievement, Creativity, Teamwork, Integrity, and Ownership Now. They build our community to make life better. I am proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Scott Slovis. Scott, come on up here, man. And I'll tell you why. Our code enforcement officers provide such a great service in our community. They are out there every day in our neighborhoods, not so much acting as code police, but working with residents to solve issues that are negatively impacting the quality of life in our city. Recently, code enforcement was advised of a neighborhood issue involving squatters in Ward Four Neighborhood. There had been several domestic violence calls at this property, some involving guns. The neighbors were rightfully concerned. At one point, there was a massive party at the location and reports of shots being fired. Scott went above and beyond, not only to document the activity at this home, but to also coordinate with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, NV Energy, Southwest Gas, and the Las Vegas Valley Water District, and other partners to return this neighborhood to normal, and help solve a big issue for nearby residents. Our neighborhoods are treasures, and we take great pride in the quality of life we have in the city of Las Vegas. Scott, thank you so much for all your work in protecting our neighborhoods and working with our residents to build a better community. I want to present you with this award on behalf of the mayor, on behalf of the mayor and the City Council for your hard work, for, for doing what you do best in the city of Las Vegas. But first, I'm going to hand the microphone to your boss to say a few words about you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It was about a year ago now, I think, that code enforcement became part of the Planning Department. And what struck me right away was about Scott was he really kind of reached out to other people in the department and really helped facilitate and bring the groups together so that the coordination between, you know, the, the people who have zoning expertise and business license expertise, and the code enforcement folks who are out there every day enforcing these codes to make our community better, Scott really helped make that happen. And, and I've gotten to know the folks in code enforcement, and I've had the pleasure to ride along with a number of people out in the field, and I'm really impressed and amazed by the work that they do out there every day to make our city great. And it's the things that go on that we really don't hear about and see often, and that's why it's so great that Scott's being recognized to sort of shine a light on the great work that all of the people in code enforcement do to make our city better. I mean, by keeping these properties compliant with code, they're, they're helping to increase property values, they're helping to reduce crime rates, they're helping to create a city that's more livable and attractive for all of us, and that's really important work. And like I said, they don't often get recognized for that. They're out there every day, working with the people, working with our residents, and they're fantastic ambassadors for our city. And this recognition for Scott, he's just a fine example of the, of the great work that's going on in code enforcement. So I'm really excited he's being recognized this way, and, and thank you very much. And I guess I turn over to Scott?
Turn over to Scott, yep.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you so much for this recognition. It really means a lot to me to know that our work is appreciated by everyone. But I can't take all the credit myself. In reality is, it's, it's a team effort. All of my coworkers, all the other code officers and inspectors, we really all do the same thing all through the city, throughout the whole city. And while I am glad we were able to help a particular neighborhood with this issue, you know, we, we all do the same job, and also it's a team effort, including the office staff, like everyone we work with, the whole code enforcement team, just to help us all work together. And also it's collaborative with the utility companies as well that helps us do our job as well, so. But thank you so much for the recognition. I really do appreciate it.
Scott, I see Vicky Azuna sitting out here, too. Vicky, come on up here with us, because I know you, you, all of us, all of us as council members put code enforcement to work every day in our respective wards. I mean, we can't do what we do as city council members without a great team behind us. So Scott, not only get that really cool glass with our picture on it, but your name is going to be on this sign right over here for a month out on Main Street, so you can drive by as often as you like and take selfies and pictures and the whole nine yards. So let's, let's go get a picture over there by the, by the sign. What a great guy. That whole department's amazing, so we're very blessed. Thanks again, Scott. Thank you, Director. For our next item, I would like to invite our Senior Citizen Advisory Board Chair, Mary Ellen Heistown. Oh, she's sitting right here in front of me. Come on over here, girl. Give her a round of applause. She's awesome. Mary Ellen is here today to recognize our senior of the quarter. It's a very special day, so I'm going to turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city of Las Vegas employees and staff, and our honored guests. On behalf of the Senior Citizen Advisory Board today, we are recognizing a gentleman who has done a lot in our community. He comes from Mayor Pro Tem's ward, two doors down, so this is really exciting. And we have a board member who has served many years on the board, who is not only a very close friend of his, but has served tirelessly on our board as well, and I'd like to have Mickey Moore, please join me at the podium. Also at this time, we would like to introduce our honoree Marvin, and if he would have his wife accompany him as well, Eileen, we would appreciate it.
I would like to cover just a few, not all, but a few of the things that Marvin is involved with currently and has been in our city. Now, to start with, he does live up north in Centennial Hills, and that's an important thing. But the most important thing in Marvin is his spiritual life. He attends the DKV Temple in Sun City Summerlin. There, he is the Executive Vice President. He's co-chairman of the Chaplaincy Program, the Sunshine Committee. He's a mitzvah driver?
Very.
Driver, yes. Hey, that's pretty good. And he transports people to the doctor, to get medical supplies, to meetings and so on that have health issues, and to do shopping. He's also involved with the HOA. He's Vice President of the HOA Board where he lives, and he is in charge of the Neighborhood Watch Program. He is involved with Project REAL. REAL stands for Relevant Education About the Law. He escorts four through 12th graders through the different court buildings, the federal and the regional court, and teaches them about how the law works, and they can actually see the courts in action. He volunteers with both CERT, which is the Citizens Edu, I'm sorry, the Citizens Emergency Response Team, which is the Fire Department's volunteer branch, and he also is a disaster worker with the American Red Cross. He volunteers with the Metropolitan Police Department. There, he is currently Site Coordinator for the new campus that the Police Department has on MLK. He coordinates the front desk or the security people. When you walk in, you address these people so that you can be taken to whatever department or whatever officer is required to meet your needs. He coordinates 60 five-hour positions a month, and also they, like I say, take care of much of the security as to who enters and does not enter the building. He is additionally on the Board of the CPAA, which is the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. That's hard to get out all in one breath. And, and this is a group that anybody can join. You go to the academy, and then afterwards you can join the association, and their primary project is to get materials for the Police Department that isn't covered under the normal budget. Some of this may be materials for our youth organization, our cadets and our academy, and other things may be for the Advanced Officer Training Program, where our officers learn to deal with the special situations that we have in Vegas that makes us very unique. Previously, amongst many, many other things, he was in charge of handicap parking at the Enterprise Command, and he also has done Viva at the airport, and he, many other projects with the city. Now, just from a personal standpoint, I'd like to say that, well, I'm an only child. So as an only child, I've regretted that for a long time, but I didn't have any control over it. I've often wanted to have a brother or a sister, someone that I could look up to, that I could respect, and that I could emulate in my life. And as a Boy Scout and went in school, and then in my work life, and now in my retired life, I have selected different people that I can model myself after. One of those people that I have and I consider to be a relative is Eileen. The reason for this, the rea, I mean, Marvin's my brother, that's no question, but Eileen I see as a sister, because without our wives, without our better three-quarters, none of the volunteer work that we do could we accomplish. And so that reason, I want her to be here, and I give you Marvin.
Thank you, Mickey. On behalf of the Senior Citizen Advisory Board in the city of Las Vegas, we'd like to present this award to you for all of your outstanding community services and all the accomplishments that you have done. Thank you very much.
Many of you who know me, I'm usually never at a loss for words, but Mickey's presentation just puts so much honor and pride in what we do. The people in the audience that are here and made arrangements to be here, and so many who couldn't, we are extended family. The thing that we bring when we do things for this great city, as I said to the mayor and, and the former mayor, both congregants from BKV as well, is simply we're second to none because we care. And what we do is give back, and the greatest accomplishment in terms of recognition is really helping others to have a better life. And for each of you, you know I love you, and I am thankful to be here with you. And the only thing I would have added is the kids who live in Long Island, and one in Virginia, and one in Florida, hopefully they're with us right now as well. Thank you, and God bless.
You are very deserving, Marvin, as you, as you are as well. Can we, can we do, do me a favor? Can all of you that volunteer with Metro stand up, please, and we get the camera on them? Give them a round of applause for what they do for this community. Turn around so everybody can see your faces. Turn around and say hello to everybody. I know we're recognizing Marvin, but this is such a great group of people that you associate yourself with. Mickey, you as well, and Mary Ellen, I can't tell you how much we as city council members appreciate all the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee does for, for us. And you're right, I, he's my neighbor, and he's always smiling. Even when you get up in the mil, in the morning and get your paper up the driveway. See, buddy. All right. Thank you. Give him another round of applause. He's awesome. For our next item, Councilwoman Tarkanian is going to recognize a group that is making a difference in providing educational materials to our students. Councilwoman?
I'm going to take a little longer today in this presentation because there are many, there are different entities involved, and because it shows what teamwork can do. Excuse me. I'd like to call up, please, to stand with me, Mary Lou Taxopoulos, and also Joe O'Neill. I hope you're here. This note says you're here.
Here they are, over here.
They're coming. They're coming. Now, as they're coming up, I'll begin what I was going to say, and then they'll say a few words. We have citizens in Las Vegas who are among the most generous in the country. Many times people, such as our senior citizens, donate time, some people donate money, some people donate in kind, but we are among the most generous here in Las Vegas. Many of them go about their acts of generosity in a quiet, low-profile manner, and we are honoring today one such organization, and that's the Charles Marshall Foundation. I'm taking a little extra time because these were special people, and I think that after you pass away, it's good if your memory can stay for all the good things that you did. Charles Marshall and his wife, Mary, were the inspiration for this foundation. They were ordinary people who decided not to settle for the hand they were dealt. Instead, they chose to improve their own lives and actively sought to enrich the lives of others. The Marshall family lived on a farm before and during the Great Depression, a lot of hard work, a lot of getting up at 2:00 in the morning, and it was a hard life for them, and especially after the tragic death of their father, who died of a womb after it became infected with gangrene. And so the children, the oldest brother took over, and the children worked hard to take his place and make up for all the hard work he did. Now, Mary, as a young girl, contracted scarlet fever, which damaged her heart and left her unable to bear children. Eventually, she became very ill and was admitted to the Department of Cardiovascular Surgery at the Stanford School of Medicine. And Charles, throughout his life, would always speak about how grateful he was at that school, and their efforts had extended Mary's life. And it made me think of how we're working on getting our school of medicine here in Las Vegas and all the good that can come from that. Now, Charles had always wanted to become a doctor, and with his older brother's financial help, his older brother did not go to school so he could help pay for the younger brother's college. He graduated, Charles graduated from the University of Chicago Pritzker School of Medicine. In 1975, after many years in the field, he and Mary moved to Reno, where he lectured in the Speech Pathology Department. And I want to say this is truly amazing to show you how small the world this is. In 1975, I was a speech pathologist. I was up there at Reno, and I probably heard him lecture. That shows you how, and I never, ever knew his name really until this was given to me. But anyway, while they were there, they made it possible through scholarship donations for many students to obtain their own dreams, many students to go on to be doctors. Now, their charitable gifts, not only in the field of giving scholarships and donations, I have, I could have three pages and I could take half an hour to go through all of them. That's how much they did. Now, when Charles passed away in June 2009, the Charles Marshall Foundation was established, and the president and chairman of the foundation is Mary Lou. Yes. And she's been a resident of Las Vegas since 1963. She's a Valley High student graduate. She worked for 28 years with the Clark County Election Department, going from a key punch operator to a geographic information systems official, and by golly, that's tough stuff. It really, truly is. The latest donation of the Marshall Foundation is a generous gift of 300 copies of the book Hamlet for the school, our CCSD students. Beverly Mason of the CCSD Schools Community Partnership Program assisted with this. Within the school, city, our own city, Bonanza High, and the College of Southern Nevada High School were participants, along with four other county schools. Now, most of you have probably heard about the Utah Shakespeare Festival. It hits the road each year with an educational outreach program for schools in Nevada, Utah, Idaho, and Arizona. And the highlight of this season's tour program is a version of Shakespeare's Hamlet, which includes complete costume sets, theatrical lighting, and then also a post-show discussion with the actors. And I'm taking this to do a little extra thing, because we talk, we talk about teaching, and if you want to know about good teaching and relating the world's masterpieces to what's happening today, consider the emphasis that happened here when they brought Hamlet. This tragic masterpiece is one of Shakespeare's most pessimistic plays, and as such, it delivers the message that in a fallen world, reality fails to match the ideal. Hamlet himself endures much of what adolescents presently today endure, and this is where the relationship is emphasized to the students. So you're not just thinking of Hamlet and the different language, and my gosh, look at all those things Shakespeare gave us, all those sayings that we use today. He lasts forever. That's what they say. Shakespeare lasts forever. So the idea is to challenge students to examine the mastery of human experiences. The objective is to encourage critical thinking and reflection on subject matters concerning death, grief, cruelty, loneliness, despair, insanity, bullying, loss of the meaning of life, breakdown in relationships, and corruption of the basic institutions of life. And that's what's contained in Shakespeare, and you can relate every single one of those to what's happening today. So using the provided Utah Shakespeare Festival study guide and resources, teachers are asked to contact, to conduct classroom activities and discussions that challenge the students to compare and to contrast the play's themes and how they were relevant to their own lives. And the intended result is for students to understand how to deal with adversity, and be left with the message, and to comprehend that life is indeed worth living, even by imperfect people in an imperfect world. And I think this is marvelous, what they did, and also the teamwork that was involved, the teamwork of CCSD and their community partnership, the teamwork with the foundation, the teamwork with the schools that were, were involved. And I just think, I, you know, I'd never heard of the George, the Charles Marshall Foundation, and I, and I do a lot of work with charities, and I thought, you know, this is a group, they've gone on and done all these wonderful things, and I didn't even hear of them, and they go quietly about it, and then they lock in with the rest of the team to do something that's meaningful. That's the key to learning, meaningful, and that's what they did with this program this summer. So I want to congratulate you. I want to say thank you so very much, present you with certificate of recognition, tell you how proud we are. You know, their whole foundation board is almost relatives, right? And you can, and if you read what they've done, they've just done many marvelous things. And also, I think we have one for our Cultural Affairs Department. Oh, Beverly Mason.
Yeah.
Oh, Beverly, I should have had you come up. I'm sorry. But this is for you, Beverly.
Thank you.
And thank you. You're doing a great job. You know, I was there when you first started. They had seven partnerships with businesses. What do you have, about 500 or so now? Yep, you do. And then to Judy Myers of our school, the Schools Community Partnership Program. Oh, there, sorry. There you are.
No, I'm not.
Oh, you're not.
She's from your office.
Oh, oh, she's not here today.
I'm here for her.
Okay. But anyway, thank you so much, and thank all of you working so hard together, and let me have you say a few words.
I tend to get all choked up when I start talking, so I'd actually like to turn the microphone over to my daughter, Irene Lauten.
Hello. My name is Rena, and I normally do all of the marketing and things like that for the organization. My mom and I worked really hard to really put this together for the foundation, and my father helps a lot, and my mother-in-law helps a lot. And this, again, it's a collaborative organization. We work, we work together with everybody, and if it wasn't for all of you who contribute as well, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we do. And for my great uncle Charles, who really put the bulk of this together, this was his dream, and we want to continue his, his name and continue the legacy that he's done. I'm a native to Las Vegas, so this is, this is really where, where it needs to be, and community is really important to us. So thank you so much.
Beverly, did you want to say anything? Because you work so closely with them.
On behalf of the school district, we do want to thank the city of Las Vegas for this, this honor, and all of our business partners. The school district is part of a nationwide initiative to bring the arts to all of our children in the valley, and so when we have the chance to collaborate with the different entities and arts organizations to do that, it is truly a privilege and an honor, and so we just want to thank you for that opportunity.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't seeing through my back.
Perfectly okay. I just want to say, on behalf of the Office of Cultural Affairs, we're really fortunate to have folks like you in our community. We are always struggling to find funding for arts programming, and to quote Shakespeare, "to be or not to be..." And to quote Shakespeare, "To be or not to be," line from Hamlet, this program is to be because of all of you. So thank you very much.
And Joe, you did a great job in recognition for the Marshall Foundation. You did a great job. I think, you know what, this just shows what we can do if we work together. That's all. Just keep the positive and work together. And what's your reward? You feel really good inside when you see what happens.
Awesome. Good job. Wonderful job. Thank you all.
No, Hannah, thank you very much. Can we have just a picture?
Yeah. Sure. Get it, Joe.
Let me stand back here. I think...
Oh, boy. Nikki might have to do it again. Nikki. Might have to refer you again to take a photo.
I could get here. Hey, you're tight.
Get right up here. Here. All right. Yay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good job, Councilman. Thank you guys so much for what you do in our community. It's a good day in the City of Las Vegas. And for our final item, Councilman Anthony is going to recognize the anniversary of one of our Houses of Worship. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right. It is my privilege this morning to recognize the anniversary of the Canyon Ridge Christian Church. At this time, I would like Senior Pastor Kevin Oder to come down. Senior Pastor, give him a nice round of applause. And the Chief Operating Officer for the church, Steve Wilson. Canyon Ridge Christian Church began with the help of Central Christian Church and held its first services on January 23rd, 1993. Pastor Kevin Oder has faithfully served Canyon Ridge Christian Church in the role of senior pastor for 20 years, and with the elders, operations team, and staff, Canyon Ridge Christian Church has provided quality family ministries to the people of our community for 23 years, and this Saturday is their birthday. Canyon Ridge Christian Church has about 35,000 congregants. I think that's about half the city of Las Vegas, or pretty close to it, representing 11,000 households. The church performs about eight services each week, in addition to hosting anonymous groups for alcohol, gambling, drug, and eating disorders. The members of Canyon Ridge Christian Church are civic-minded as they provide a site for early voting, as well as sports courts for youth activities. Canyon Ridge Christian Church has contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars and countless volunteer hours to humanitarian efforts. Canyon Ridge Christian Church has generously supported local organizations and agencies that provide services to under-resourced causes in the city of Las Vegas. The values of Canyon Ridge Christian Church include the following: great commission, where congregants are encouraged to come as you are and grow stronger every day; great commandment, where congregants are reminded to love God and to love other people; and great community, where congregants remember no one stands alone. These values have meaning in all our lives and make our community a better place to live. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I would like to present you with a proclamation recognizing 23 years of service and your birthday this Saturday. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. It's an honor to be recognized, and we see ourselves in partnership with you because you are public servants, serving the community and providing services and protecting them. And our job is to serve the public as well, to provide the faith foundation for their lives. It's been an honor to do that in our town for 23 years. Those of us that came to help start the church saw the fastest, we had the chance to start a church for people who weren't going to church, on the fastest-growing side of the fastest-growing city in the country, back in 1993. And we have had a great adventure. We love this town, we love the people, but we are imperfect people in an imperfect world. So we're not a perfect church, and we know that, but we also know that we have great people. We fall in love with the city. And as we are strong, we believe we make the community stronger. And we are grateful for your recognition of that partnership. We thank you, though, and we, well, you guys know, we pray for you because you are humans who have lives and family and children and concerns and burdens, that any of those could take you out of the game of serving and doing well. And we want you to do well, and we want you to be strong. So know that you have our support and our partnership together. And to all the Canyon Ridge family, man, it's been a wild ride, and we are so grateful for God's faithfulness, and we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of hurting people in this valley that still need help, and we're here to try to reach them as well. So thank you for this honor. We're glad to be here today. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being a great part of our community, and good luck in the future. All right.
That concludes our ceremonial portion. We will begin our city council meeting, seven minutes?
Seven minutes.
Sounds so good. Okay. Thank you. All right. Back to work we go at the Las Vegas City Council. This is, we're on Agenda Item Number Nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Puyi Premsoret, 520 South Fourth Street. I'm speaking on behalf of New Leaf CLE Dispensary, which is Agenda Item Number 56. In relation to Agenda Item Number 50, New Leaf was ranked number three from the state, as your honorable counsel know. The council disfavored the location and ultimately issued a denial of that location, however, instructing New Leaf to secure an alternate location with an SUP. New Leaf did precisely just that. For approximately 10 months, New Leaf has fought for and has been awaiting that mechanism to bridge the SUP with the compliance certificate, because as the council has commented on the record, they favored New Leaf as an organization. Throughout this time, litigation was filed against New Leaf by GB Sciences and a come-lately intervenor, Akers Medical. The court determined somehow that because the city denied the original location despite the relocation statutes, that New Leaf CLE should have never had a provisional. We believe that's an erroneous order because not only is it in contravention of the relocation statutes, it's in contravention of the other judges and what the city intended. The purpose of my comments are to advise the city council that New Leaf intends to appeal this erroneous order, and that any compliance certificate issued to any other person to fill the number three spot by number 13 person will be fought, and ultimately that could be overturned. New Leaf respects this honorable counsel, but frankly, the process has enabled far less suitable applicant to come before your counsel for suitability. And as a result...
Ms. President, you'll have an opportunity to speak on these again when we get to 55 and 56. I don't mean to be rude and cut you off.
Thank you.
I think we got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on a public comment? Seeing none, we move on to Agenda Item Number 10. These are business items. This is for possible action. Any items that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon this time. Councilwoman?
The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, or stricken. Item Number 42, a report by the planning staff on taverns with restricted gaming, which is to have abeyance to 2316, requested by Mayor Pro Tem Ross. Item Number 43, as an abeyance item, and it is requested by staff to be stricken. Item Number 43 is an abeyance item, medical marijuana dispensary establishment license, and that is requested to be obeyed to 46216.
Item 44. Is it 47? 47.
Oh, what did I say? 44? Oh, I'm sorry. I meant 47. I had already said 43. Thank you. And Item 48, an abeyance item on a medical marijuana dispensary, obeyed to 3216, requested by staff. Three, Two, Sixteen, requested by staff.
And is that your motion?
That is my motion.
There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. That motion passes. We are on Agenda Item Eleven, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen regular city council meeting. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Tarkinian, do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I do. Did you, are you trying to reach him, Mr. Coffin?
I am, just on the previous item. Just that, I saw that some of those items that were obeyed by staff are amongst a group of items that I'm going to also address. Some of them obeyed to certain dates, so I didn't know whether or not we have two lists or the same list, and she has picked some from that same list, so that's what I-
Okay.
-I was concerned about. But after, when it gets to the item of business after consent, we can talk about it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
I move to approve the minutes.
There's a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Councilwoman. Please vote. And please post.
Did you vote?
Okay. And again, Mayor Goodman is excused as she is representing the city of Las Vegas at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, D.C. We are on Agenda Item Twelve through Forty-One. These are all on the consent agenda and are considered by routine, to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted upon in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward at this time? Councilwoman, let me, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item Sixteen, I would like to be, I would like to pull forward.
Okay, Agenda Item Sixteen. Councilmembers, any other items you'd like to pull forward? Hearing none, then is there a motion to approve Agenda Items Twelve through Forty-One, minus number sixteen, as we will hear that item?
I still move.
There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion passes. This is Agenda Item Sixteen. This is an abeyance item for possible action to approve a packaged liquor license. Sami Ramis, LLC, doing business as Holiday House of Wine and Spirits at Two Three Zero Zero North Rainbow Boulevard, Suite One Zero One. Mrs. Duddleston?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The license before you today was issued a temporary alcoholic beverage license. This location received land use for packaged liquor. Their license application to the city was for a convenience store, so because of that designation of a convenience store, business licensing conditioned that license that the business must be in compliance as a convenience store, a business that offers sale, prepared, packaged food products, household items, and other commonly associated with those products and items, and maintain more than fifty-one percent of its retail floor space area dedicated to such products and items, and provided that no more than ten percent of its retail floor space is devoted to alcoholic beverages. This is a location a packaged liquor store would normally be a liquor store, where minors must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. A convenience store, obviously minors may, may enter. On January nineteenth, we conducted inspection based on this temporary license, and they were not in compliance as a convenience store. The business licenses were not posted, the employee list was not maintained, the signage was not in place, and they were not in compliance with the ten percent limitation. Over forty-two percent of their retail space was dedicated to hard alcohol packaged liquor. So at this point in time, they would need to either operate as a liquor store or come into compliance as a convenience store. And I know Councilman Barlow wanted to address this as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Duddleston. Is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record.
Scott Petrus, Holiday House of Wine and Spirits, twenty-three hundred North Rainbow.
Welcome. Good morning, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Barlow?
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I have to admit that I'm actually appalled that you would do this to me. When you all came before me and asked if you could have accessory liquor inside of your store, the neighbors to the west of you, I'm sorry, to the east of you, were totally, totally adamantly opposed, because they did not want liquor near their homes and because of the close proximity. When we basically agreed that it would be a very small portion of your store, the convenience store, that you would have liquor, you agreed, and I went against the wishes of the constituents. And as I look at your application that you submitted to the city of Las Vegas, in your own writing, you have here that you're a convenience store, right? And in the midst of you receiving the approval, the temporary approval for liquor, we go in the store and all of your products have now left, and every picture that was taken inside of your store, you've converted your store into a one-hundred percent liquor store, which is totally against what I would have approved in the first place, because we agreed that there would be absolutely no liquor stores at this location in front of the Christian store. And so the Christian store has gone berserk, the residents have gone berserk, because you converted a convenience store into a liquor store. Now, on your application, your name on your application is the House of Wine, Holiday House of Wine. But here, all you have on the front of your store is a very big sign that says liquor. No one even knows that you're the Holiday House of Wine, because all you have posted is liquor. So as far as I'm concerned, you went against the wishes of myself, this council, the wishes of the constituents, and you flat-out lied. And so therefore, I can't support this moving forward, so I'm going to move to deny your request for a permanent license of liquor, because you totally embarrassed myself and this council with your antics. And so, as far as I'm concerned, I am not supporting moving forward with your liquor requests. And so for that, my motion at this time is to deny Item Sixteen before this council today.
There is a motion?
Can I have a chance to correct, council? I mean, you've only been open for six weeks, and we're running through issues of being a small business in here. There is a lot of things that we're not able to come up to take care of this, and many issues, or being a small guy-
Sir, sir, we're going to move on. He's made a motion to deny your application. If you wish to make an appointment with Councilman Barlow at a later time, please feel free to do so. There's a motion on the floor? Please vote. Please post. And that motion passes. All right. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Forty-Four. This is an abeyance item, discussion of possible action regarding review of condition to amend the advertising plan approved by the Director for Medical Marijuana Dispensary Establishment License, Paradise Wellness Center, LLC, doing business as Las Vegas Relief at Two Two Four Four Paradise Road. This is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Mrs. Duddleston?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Before you today is an amendment of an advertising plan. Under Las Vegas Municipal Code Six Point Nine Five One One Zero F, with respect to issues regarding sign-in advertising that are not governed by Las Vegas Municipal Code Title Nineteen, each medical marijuana establishment shall conform to the approved sign-in advertising plan as a condition of the license. Also, under that section, the Director cannot approve an advertising plan that contains signage in the right-of-way. So the Director is precluded from any recommendations at this time. The applicant seeks to have signs in the form of billboard visible from the streets and sidewalks, which is, as I said, prohibited from our approval. If the council determines to approve this item, staff recommends the following conditions: no signs be visible from schools or sidewalks; each sign must have a written approval from the state regulating authority; each location must be reported to business licensing within thirty days prior to installation. Condition one on the license would need to be changed to the following: all operational plans must remain in compliance with Title Six Point Nine Five as approved by the Director on September second, two thousand fifteen; any amendment must be approved by the city council prior to implementation; condition two on the license would need to be changed to advertising and product lists are limited to plans approved by the Director dated September second, two thousand fourteen, and all billboard and other signage visible from the streets and sidewalks for off-premise signage must not be visible from schools or parks, and each sign must have written approval from the state regulating authority; each location must be reported to business licensing thirty days prior to installation.
Thank you, Mrs. Duddleston. Yes, Councilwoman?
I was just going to ask, are you telling me that these people who were fortunate enough to get through the whole thing that we've gone through, now we're saying that they have to have a bigger sign?
What they want is, what they're requesting is off-premise signing. Currently, under the code that was passed by the city council, it clearly stated that signage could not be visible from any street, sidewalk, park, or other public place, including advertising any of the following media, signs mounted on vehicles, handheld signs, any leaflet. And it specifically stated that the Director was not to approve any advertisement plans that contained any of those types of signs visible from your right-of-way. And they are requesting the council to approve a plan that would include billboards.
All right.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Now, then, did you indicate a certain length of time? Did you indicate that I would be amenable to a six-month approval of this? It was those conditions?
I did not. I know this item was before you at the last, at the last council meeting, you indicated that you had an ordinance pending.
If, let me ask the applicants, if we were to approve your application with the conditions as outlined by, and proposed by the licensing director, with a six-month approval period, you'd be doing us a great big favor if it worked out right. But I need to know if you are willing to accept those changes.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Ed Bernstein, five hundred South Fourth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. As the city council members know, the, this prohibition is not really clear one way or the other in the, in the city ordinance. It doesn't really deny or grant the right to have billboards. It just says that the, that the staff will not, or the director will not make a recommendation. Meanwhile, the county has a different rule. And the county dispensaries are advertising on billboards, not only in the county, but now in the city as well. So we are really at a tremendous disadvantage at a time that we're trying to clean up all the illegal delivery services and dispensaries that are on the internet, and let people know that there is a, where the legal and legitimate dispensaries and licensed dispensaries are. So we're not only competing with what the county is, dispensaries are doing, but we're also having a very difficult time competing with the illegal activities that are occurring on the internet, and letting, letting people, patients know where in fact our dispensaries are, because most of our dispensaries are in very difficult places to locate. So in answer to your question, Councilman, yeah, we would certainly be in favor of a six-month period to try this. Hopefully, there's, as you know, I know that the city council is working on some other changes in the ordinance, so levels the playing field with the county and the city, and hopefully within that six-month period, we can adjust some of these issues and, and compete on a level playing field with the county.
Okay, so, Ed, thank you for your comments. So in essence, you could, you could live with this. It would allow you to use the boards, and it would set an example for us to use. If we pass this, if the council agrees to allow you to do this for six months, and we see you in the summer, we'll look at that, look at how it works, and I suspect it'll be successful for you. I know we need to do something, and that's why advertising is a component of the bill that I'm having drafted and should be introduced next month. So you could be a nice template for what I'm proposing to do on that component of the bill, and then also, frankly, if we approve this today, others could look upon that as something that might be considered with favor by, not guaranteed, but might be considered with favor by the council, should they also apply. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, agreed, Councilman Coffin. With, we have, in this, our particular instance, we submitted documentation to the city months ago of our locations. So I would just ask for a waiver on us not having to wait thirty days to, thirty additional days. We've already waited four months. Our locations comply with, with the requirements of this ordinance.
Ed, I've seen your, I've seen your correspondence, and I agree with you. I think that the Las Vegas dispensaries have been handicapped by this and other provisions in the original code. We now know that we need to allow our dispensaries and other functions to be more competitive with other businesses in the county. So I'm in favor of that, and I think the members of the council also recognize the dilemma that we face. So we've got to loosen these things up, advertising being one component. Thank you.
Councilwoman, you have a question?
I just, you say we're going to evaluate this at the end of six months. What, what's your pre- and post-criteria for evaluating? In fact, how do we know? They just started. I don't know. How long have you been open? Four months?
Yes.
Four months, four months. And how do they know that their business has been hurt because of those signs? Now, they're assuming they are, because that's what people are supposed to have billboard signs for, but I know a lot of people don't pay attention to the billboards. So how do we know? How do, how are you going to determine how we determine that they've been hurt?
What you do is-
Or not hurt as much?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Protem, to the Councilwoman from Ward One. I think the test is in, you know, what happens out there, what you perceive, Councilwoman, as you drive around the city, see billboards, and whether you think they're misleading or whether you think they're tasteful. It's kind of like, Councilwoman, when we had the dilemma a few years ago of super graphics on buildings, and how we tailored that so that you pretty much still could not control the content, but you held a chain on the permit. So I propose to hold the chain on the permit. And so they know, they'll self-govern, and, and they'll be subject to constructive criticism, I would suspect. If you see something that's out of line, you're going to tell the team over here, Mr. Bernstein's crew, Dr. Jamison, and others, that, that you think something's out of line. I would certainly expect that to happen, even if it's not in your ward.
Well, I'm sure it will be in my ward. I'm sure it will be. That one, that's one thing I'm sure of, because you're only getting this billboard signs in your ward, my ward, and Ricky's ward. Ricky doesn't have any dispensaries in his ward, so that leaves you and me. You can have those signs there if you want.
We are, we are the liberal members of the council, and that's why we have permitted them.
Yeah, we're on the left, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's quite right. I think the larger discussion is, is what the county has enacted and what the city has enacted are very different animals, and my concern is leveling that playing field so that our dispensaries, manufacturers, testing facilities, and cultivators are on the same level playing field with the city licensees. And I think that's more, it's more important to me. Not to, not to detract anything that Councilman Coffin is suggesting, Mr. Bernstein, six months, when you make an advertising commitment, do you have any idea how long that advertising commitment is with a billboard company?
Typically, a year.
Typically, twelve months. Ed, that would just be my general concern, Councilman Coffin, in regards to your review of condition at six months. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think I can address that to you, because I've done a lot of advertising on billboards, but not to the extent that Mr. Bernstein does and has done for thirty years. It's, you know, if you have to make a change, you do it real quick, and you have the board, you have the contract, but you simply change the content. There is another company that Mr. Bernstein controls that could theoretically, in the worst possible conditions, immediately occupy that space with another face.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem? Councilman Barlow, please.
Don't mind, sir. I too have the same concern, Councilman Coffin. I understand what you're trying to do, but having, over the years, purchased billboard space and understand how it works, I think six months is, is just as unequal as the county dispensaries and the city of Las Vegas dispensaries as far as the equitability in the market. And so I would, would hope that we can possibly stretch that out to twelve months so that it can be at least in alignment with, with, with the contract for the billboards, and specifically the companies, but we could possibly have a administrative check-in at the six-month mark where staff can basically pull any boards in that we wish, if in fact there's something that stands out. But at least if there's nothing that stands out, that twelve-month period will continue to run in relation to the, to the, the contract that's in place. And so maybe that's an option that we can look at as well, as far as that six-month, but providing them the opportunity for that twelve-month to assist them in moving forward to create that, that equitability out in the market share. Thank you.
Councilman Coffin?
Through you, Mayor Protem. I would agree that that is a sensible solution, because that's more of a chance to assess the veracity of the ads. Yeah, sure.
And I think, Councilman Coffin, and Barlow, and Councilman Tarkinian, your concerns, we can, we will be able to address these individually as they come along and come in for application, whether we like that location or don't like that location, whether it's appropriate in this neighborhood or not appropriate. I think, Ms. Duddleston, you have restrictions in there for these, for advertising that are significant restrictions in proximity to schools and churches and other things like. So I think it protects those uses- So I think it protects those uses and will continue to do so. But at the same time, you know, we've got to do as much as we can to help them be as successful as the county businesses are going to be successful, and there are limited restrictions on them. So if you're prepared to make a motion, or do, would you like to add anything to that, Mrs. Dettleston?
I'm ready.
Mayor Protam, if I might, in the, in the amendment of their advertising plan, they simply added the word billboards. If you have an expectation of a certain number in that advertising plan, they did present a map to us of where they were proposing to locate these, you might want to get on the record exactly how many are in that advertising plan at this point in time. And just to, for our clarification, is that we would do an administrative report. We'll go out, we'll take pictures in six months, give those to you on an administrative level. If there's anything of concern, you can certainly recall this item. Otherwise, it would be a one-year review on the license. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly as the conditions for the license.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman.
I think that's acceptable. Mr. Mayor Protam, I want to say that we cannot seek pre-approval of the locations, so I want to make sure that's clear, because you don't know where your locations sometimes are going to be. It depends on availability. So I would say that let us know when they've been chosen, so we can drive them. Report to us in six months through our staff to indicate where you are again and how many locations you've been at. And also, I guess, licensing, you need to let licensing know and be cooperative with licensing, so at six months, licensing can present to us a report on what they feel about the effect, the efficacy of them.
May I ask again, Councilman and Mayor Protam?
Please, Mr. Bernstein.
We, as I indicated, we have three signs that we've already applied for with the city that meet these boundary requirements, exceed them two or three times the amounts. We have a fourth sign that we're going to intend to place on the Highway 15 in Sloan, Nevada, on the 15 interstate coming in from California. We would like to not have to wait another 30 days based upon what the, what staff is suggesting to get 30 days' notice. We've already given four months' notice on these three locations, and I think that they would agree that our locations currently do comply. And the one, obviously, in Sloan, Nevada, on 15, obviously, does comply as well. So it asks that those four locations be approved now, so we can get them up right away.
My motion would be to make it effective immediately.
Wait a minute. I thought, can I just ask a question? I, I thought that before determination was made, that they could have the sign, that it would come, and we would determine if they could have the sign, and they are not. There might be some reason why we might feel they shouldn't have the sign. I thought you said that just a little while ago.
That is correct, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Well, if he does this now, we don't even, I don't even know where his signs are.
Well, he's going to put on the record where those signs are, and I believe Councilman Coffin's already been briefed as to the locations of those signs. Have you not, Councilman Coffin?
I have. I think I saw a map indicating they were virtually all in Ward 3.
Yeah, you have, you have background information on this for a number of months that you've had. We have a sign at Sahara Overpass at the 15, two in East Sahara that are within 2,500 feet of any park and school, and the one in Sloan, Nevada.
So you, you already, they're all in yours, so he's already talked to you. Okay.
Yes, and they have been, of course, they've been in our hands for four months, that literally, the council has had this document since November, or early, yeah, early November. Okay, so then therefore, that motion is to, for a 12-month approval, effective immediately?
Before we vote on that motion, Councilman Beers?
Excuse me?
I would be in support of your motion, Councilman Coffin. I'm just listening to this discussion. In the back of my mind, there's nothing that we can do to stop a non-city licensed dispensary from advertising in the city. And so I think initially, the drafters of our ordinance had hoped that we could keep the viewscape clean for our citizenry. That is not possible.
Is that a question or just a comment?
It's a question. That is not possible?
Councilman Coffin, turn your microphone on so we can hear you.
Through you, Mayor, to my colleague from District 4, I mean, District 2, it's precisely the reason why we have legal drafting and amendment to our existing ordinances on advertising. So many of these imbalances have been discovered as we, the rubber hit the road. And now we're in competition. We understand, we've got to make changes. That's why we recognize reality. And so in this particular component of the major bill, this, why not go ahead and pass it now, see how it works? And then in a few weeks, we'll be addressing the entire proposal.
Okay. I hope that answers your question. Councilman Beers, I do know before we vote, Mrs. Dettleston, would you like to say something else?
Just in clarification, that the proposed conditions do mirror what the county's requiring of their, the billboards for marijuana.
Wonderful, thank you. Then there has been a motion made. Please vote.
Before I vote, I just want to reemphasize that if they were going to have billboards in any ward, they would come to them first, the way they did with Mr. Coffin.
I think the industry's put on notice, Councilwoman, and I think that will happen.
Okay, you have to bring it, okay. Thank you very much.
Please post the vote, please. Congratulations. Thank you, Mrs. Dettleston.
Thank you, Council.
We are moving on to Agenda Item 45. This is a discussion, possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana dispensary establishment licensed Nevada Wellness Project, doing business as Downtown Dispensary at 823 South Third Street. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin's Ward. Mrs. Dettleston.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. This applicant is requesting a change of ownership. The applicant requests to remove Deco LLC and its member, David R. Cohen, as an owner and to add Michael Cornthwaite as an owner of Nevada Wellness Project Holdings LLC. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Dettleston. He is the applicant present. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Counsel Alicia Ashcraft of the Law Firm of Ashcraft and Barr, 2300 West Sahara. On behalf of the applicant, with me are two of the owners, Mr. Ted Lowe and Mr. Michael Cornthwaite. Happy to answer any questions that you may have and would request approval in accordance with staff's recommendation.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
Mayor Protam, I'm going to move for approval of Item 45. And it'll be removing David R. Cohen as owner and adding Michael Cornthwaite.
Very well. There's a motion to, Mrs. Dettleston, before we vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protam, under the conditions of compliance permits, you need to set a date specific for when this compliance permit would expire. Since we're not dealing with the new list, we're dealing with the current rankings of the state, staff would suggest the, that the compliance permit would be approved to expire on May 4, 2016, which coincides with their certificate with the state for the applicant.
Is that agreeable to the applicant?
That is, Mayor Protam. Thank you.
That is this year, in four months it would expire? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please vote. And please post. Motion passes. Congratulations. Good to see you, Mr. Cornthwaite.
Thank you, sir.
We are on Agenda Item 46.
Your Honor, it is my item, and I am going to move to strike Item 46 because it is not necessary since 45 has been approved.
Let me get it on the record first, Councilman, and we shall move that direction then. This is a discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a medical marijuana dispensary establishment licensed wellness, Nevada Wellness Project, doing business as Downtown Dispensary at 823 South Third Street. There has been a motion to strike this agenda item. Please vote. And please post. And that motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. We are on Agenda Item 47. This is an abeyance item as well. Discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a medical marijuana dispensary establishment licensed Nutra, Nutrex II, doing business as Nutrex at, oh, I'm sorry, that item's been abeyed. Yeah. I'm sorry, that item has been abeyed. Please, we're moving on to Agenda Item 48, it's been abeyed as well. Moving on to Agenda Item 49. Thank you, Councilman, for babysitting me. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment cultivation, Acres Medical, doing business as Acres Medical LLC at 2320 Western Avenue. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Mrs. Dettleston.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. This applicant requests additional time to complete their project and has filed with the state of Nevada to extend their current state provisional certificate to May 4, 2016. Staff recommends approval of a new compliance permit subject to the following conditions. Must maintain a current state provisional certificate. Plans be updated, reviewed, and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. Compliance permit to expire May 4, 2016, with the ability of the director to, to issue one extension up to 90 days if the director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
Very good. And I see the applicant present. Please state your name for the record. Perfect timing, by the way.
Even better.
First. Hi, I'm Jenna Morton. I reside at 36 Quite Moon Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The conditions should be acceptable to the applicant. Do you agree to the three conditions as outlined by our licensing director?
We do.
All right, thank you very much. Then, Your Honor, on the Item 49, I move for approval with the conditions as stated by our licensing director.
Very good. There's a motion for approval with conditions stated by our licensing director. Please vote.
Sorry.
And please post. That motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
We are on Agenda Item Number 50.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We are on Agenda Item Number 50, discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment production, Acres Medical, doing business at Acres Medical LLC at 2320 Western Avenue. This, too, is in Councilman Coffin's Ward 3. Mrs. Dettleston.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. The applicant requests additional time to complete this project and has filed with the state of Nevada to extend their current provisional certificate to May 4, 2016. Staff recommends approval of the new compliance permit subject to the following conditions. One, must maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Two, plans be updated, reviewed, and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. Three, compliance permit to expire May 4, 2016, with the ability of the director to issue one extension up to 90 days if the director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
Is that agreeable to the applicant?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Councilman Coffin?
On Item 50, Your Honor, I move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 50, subject to those conditions. Please vote. And please post. Motion passes. Again, congratulations. We are again on, we're on Agenda Item 51, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment dispensary, Acres Medical, doing business as Acres Medical LLC at 2320 Western Avenue. This, too, is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin's Ward. Mrs. Dettleston.
Thank you, Your Honor. This applicant was awarded a state provisional certificate issued by the state December 18, 2015, pursuant to the court order dated December 14, 2015, of the H Judicial District Court in GB Sciences Nevada LLC versus State of Nevada et al. The state issued the certificate with an expiration date of June 17, 2017. Staff recommends the approval of a new compliance permit subject to the following conditions. One, must maintain a state, current state provisional registration certificate. Plans must be updated, reviewed, and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. Compliance permit to expire June 17, 2017, with the ability of the director to issue an extension, one extension up to 90 days if the director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
Thank you, Mrs. Dettleston. Is that agreeable to the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I move to approve, the date of 12, excuse me, June 17, 2017 is inconsistent with the others. Why is that different?
They were awarded this provisional certificate as an outcome of a lawsuit.
So that mirrors the state's...
The state issued those certificates for 18 months, so they gave this applicant 18 months from the time that that's, the date of that certificate was issued by the state. And they will, will allow a brief extension if they are substantially constructed at that time.
Mayor Protam, not making a motion yet, but on this comment, I know that you have promised the attorney for GB Sciences a chance to speak on this. And so before I make that motion, I'm going to withhold the motion. I am in favor of this, so I want you to know. I intend to vote for it, but I think in the interest of fairness, you did indicate they could speak. I think also it is appropriate that we congratulate them on their decision at the judicial level, recognizing that one level leads to another, and so there will be continued litigation here. But it would appear to me that you've met all the requirements for doing business now. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Ms. Pemzra, did you just speak to this item?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilman Coffin, actually, I'm the attorney for New Leaf.
Okay.
And the reason I interjected at the public comment was I wasn't certain whether I'd be afforded time to speak on this agenda item. So just by way of background, to refresh the recollection of the council, New Leaf was ranked number three by the state, unequivocally one of the top applicants in this jurisdiction. Litigation was filed by GB Sciences, not by Acres Medical, who stands before you. Acres Medical only came into litigation several months ago where it sought to re-rank its scores before Judge Kaddish. All it did was say, "The state calculated our scores incorrectly. We seek by way of mandamus, re-rank our scores." After they obtained that relief, they catapulted into our lawsuit and fought with, with not only New Leaf, but GB Sciences stating, "Well, because the council denied New Leaf's original location, New Leaf, you weren't entitled to a provisional." New Leaf's position, as the position of other state court judges who've ruled on this matter, believed that the ability to relocate, the ability for the state to determine who are the most qualified and suitable applicants to own and operate medical marijuana establishments in the state of Nevada should be controlled by the state and not necessarily determined by land use. And I think the council felt the same when it instructed New Leaf to find a new location with an SUP. So the point for my being here is not only to make a record of what has happened to New Leaf, but to inform the council that we are appealing this before the Supreme Court. GB Sciences and Acres Medical still have conflict, are still fighting over the same provisional before Judge Eric Johnson in the state court. So while we certainly respect the process and we respect each and every council member, this process has been disappointing, to say the least, because you are about to approve a far less qualified applicant to own and operate a medical marijuana business in your jurisdiction versus a number-three ranked applicant whose operators are out of Berkeley, who have the most reputable and established medical marijuana dispensary in the country. So thank you very much for allowing me to make my record. This is obviously no disrespect to the applicant themselves. This is purely speaking to the state and their rankings that New Leaf was number three and deserved to be before you for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam?
Councilman Tarkanian?
And so how does this vote affect New Leaf?
Mrs. Dettleston?
I don't believe this would have any effect on New Leaf.
So this, this vote doesn't have any effect? Okay, then, that's fine. I understand. And secondly, I would say that I was one of them who went through their application because they couldn't, they couldn't have it in my ward because of other problems. But in any case, I will support what she said about the excellence of their application. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor Protam, if I might qualify. New Leaf is currently not in our system. They do not have land use. They do not have a compliance permit. They were not issued one by this council. They have requested one on your agenda today. They may have a different opinion on whether it affects them or not, but from a licensing perspective, they are not currently one of our customers.
Thank you, Mrs. Dettleston. Councilman Coffin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. Again, thank you for permitting the applicant and the representative of the applicant from New Leaf to appear and make a case, because really, all the people involved in the litigation are competent. They're all good people. They all really, frankly, and from my opinion, are deserving of licensing. And it's too bad the process is convoluted, confusing. It's clumsy, because it's all started, the seeds were sown when the statute was drafted three years ago. And little did they know up there in Carson City that three years later, we'd still be up there in Carson City that three years later, we'd still be arguing about this because of the language that they chose as to who would have first rights, and that a state license couldn't be issued unless, you know, they had local approval. But you grant no local approval to somebody, and then you get a state license, you see, it's all backwards. And so consequently, that's where we're at. And let the courts solve it, but in the meantime, we may be ordered to do something. We'll find out. The courts have power over this. So in the meantime, I think they're all qualified, and I'm very proud to have them as a new business in Ward Three. And so therefore, now I move for approval of item fifty-one, the compliance permit.
There is a motion to approve agenda item fifty-one with the conditions Mrs. Duddleston read into the record and agreed upon by the applicant. Please vote. And please post. That motion passes as well. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We're moving on to agenda item fifty-two. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment cultivation, Boulevard Medical LLC, doing business as Boulevard Medical LLC at two-nine-zero-zero Highland Drive, Building Twenty. This is in Ward One. Counselwoman Tarkanian's Ward. Mrs. Duddleston.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This applicant requests additional time to complete their project and has filed with the State of Nevada to extend their current provisional certificate to May fourth, 2016. Staff recommends approval of a new compliance permit, subject to the following conditions: One, must maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Two, plans must be updated, reviewed, and approved by the Director prior to consideration of a business license. Compliance permit to expire May fourth, 2016, with the ability of the Director to issue one extension up to ninety days if the Director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
Thank you, Mrs. Duddleston. I see the applicant present. Would you please put your name on the record?
Good morning. Christina Kleist, thirty-nine-sixty Howard Hughes Parkway Suite 500, appearing on behalf of applicant Boulevard Medical. I'm appearing because Mr. Jay Brown is unavailable. He had to run to another hearing. I simply want to say applicant is moving forward with the project. However, it has been delayed with unexpected issues relating to the property and the facility design. A new design team was retained in November, and they are working towards finalizing and submitting reconfigured plans in the next few weeks. They are also in the process of opening another facility at the end of this month, and fully anticipate to have this facility operational by May. The applicant does agree with the proposed conditions and respectfully requests approval.
Thank you very much, Counselwoman Tarkanian.
Before, Counselwoman Tarkanian, if you don't mind, Counselwoman, put me in favor of the request, if you will. I need to run to the back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Barlow.
Or let me put it this way. Whatever the Councilwoman votes, I'm voting with her. Up or down?
Thank you, Counselman. Counselwoman.
I move to approve a new compliance permit, subject to staff's conditions.
There's a motion. Counselman Barlow is in approval as well. Please vote. And please post. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Counselwoman Tarkanian. This is agenda item fifty-three. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment production, Boulevard Medical. Yeah, you're still here. Doing business as Boulevard Medical LLC at two-nine-zero-zero Highland Drive, Building Twenty, in Counselwoman Tarkanian's Ward One. Mrs. Duddleston.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This applicant requests additional time to complete this project and has filed with the State of Nevada to extend their current provisional certificate to May fourth, 2016. Staff also recommends approval of the new compliance permit, subject to the following conditions: That one, must maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Two, plans must be updated, reviewed, and approved by the Director prior to consideration of a business license. Three, compliance permit to expire May fourth, 2016, with the ability of the Director to issue one extension up to ninety days if the Director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
Thank you very much. And the applicant?
Again, Christina Kleist, thirty-nine-sixty Howard Hughes Parkway, on behalf of applicant. Essentially, exactly the same.
You agree to those conditions?
Happy to answer any, yeah, agree to the conditions, happy to answer any.
Counselwoman Tarkanian.
Move to approve a new compliance permit, subject to staff's conditions.
There's an approval on agenda item fifty-three. Please vote. And please post. Maybe. Counselman Barlow. And that motion passes. Now I think you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselwoman Tarkanian. We're on agenda item number fifty-four. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment cultivation, Compassionate Team of Las Vegas LLC, doing business as Compassionate Team of Las Vegas LLC, at two-six-zero-one Highland Drive. This is also in Counselwoman Tarkanian's Ward One. Mrs. Duddleston.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This applicant also requests additional time to complete their project and has filed with the State of Nevada to extend their current provisional certificate to May fourth, 2016. Staff recommends the approval of a new compliance permit, subject to the following conditions: Must maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Plans be updated, reviewed, and approved by the Director prior to consideration of a business license. Compliance permit to expire May fourteenth, 2016, with the ability of the Director to issue one extension up to ninety days if the Director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
I see the applicant present. Please state your name.
Brian Hardy with the Law Firm of Marquis Arbot Coffing, on behalf of the applicant.
Do you agree to those conditions?
We agree.
Thank you. Ms., Counselwoman Tarkanian.
I move to approve a new compliance permit, subject to all of staff's conditions.
There's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. And that motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are on agenda item fifty-five. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment cultivation, New Leaf CLV Cultivation LLC, doing business as New Leaf CLV Cultivation LLC at one-zero-one-eight South Commerce Street. This is in Ward Three. Counselman Coffin. Mrs. Duddleston.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This applicant also requests additional time to complete this cultivation project and has filed with the State of Nevada to extend their current state provisional certificate to May fourth, 2016. Staff recommends the approval of a new compliance permit, subject to the following conditions: One, must maintain a current state provisional certificate. Two, plans must be updated, reviewed, and approved by the Director prior to consideration of a business license. Three, compliance permit to expire May fourth, 2016, with the ability of the Director to issue one extension up to ninety days if the Director determines that substantial construction has been completed.
And I see the applicant present. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem. Members of the council, Jeff Donato, six-zero-seven-seven South Fort Abadji Road, Las Vegas, Nevada, here on behalf of the applicant, New Leaf CLV Cultivation. With respect to the extension, just want to kind of discuss that just really quick. We did file for an extension, or, I'm sorry, an application to renew our state provisional with the state. The state's position on that is addressed in a letter that they submitted that they had prepared on December eighth, in which, and I have it here on the overhead. The state's position is that so long as a MME is making steps towards, towards opening the establishment and has submitted a renewal application, they will take no action on May fourth or May third, and so long as they have a valid state provisional. So what we would request is that the city not put a deadline on the extension, but just grant us a compliance permit so long as we have a valid state provisional. We may need additional time, and all we're requesting is, as long as we have a state provisional, a valid state provisional, that the city will allow us to have a valid compliance permit. And then, secondly, we paid with regards to the application fees, we paid a five-thousand-dollar application fee back in 2014, and in 2015, we were required to pay an additional five-thousand-dollar application fee. It was our understanding that we could request that additional five-thousand dollars to be applied towards licensing cost. So in addition to the extension, we'd also request that the five-thousand dollars paid would be applied towards cost. With that, we're here to answer any questions.
Mrs. Duddleston, would you like to respond before I turn it over to Counselman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Concerning license fees, when we were directed to open compliance permit, there was a request for the consideration of an ordinance to allow the fees from these certificates to be applied towards licensing fees, and we are working on that ordinance. That would have to be a decision of the city council. As to deadlines, our compliance permits have, need to be issued with a deadline. Originally, they were issued based on the, they were to expire one year from the date that the original certificates were issued by the state, and that was a date certain. It would be up to the council to choose a date, but the state has informed us that on May fourth, if they no longer are moving forward with a local government, the state will consider revocation. If the local government is no longer moving forward with an applicant, that may be something that you all want to consider on how long you are going to allow these to go forward without the state opening a new application process, project, process for additional applicants.
Thank you very much. Counselman Coffin.
Thank you. I have a question. If the applicant could once again state when the additional five-thousand dollars is due?
We paid the initial five thousand at the time we submitted the application in 2014, and then when the city reopened the process again, we paid an additional five thousand for the new compliance permit. But it was our understanding that we could request that be applied towards a cost versus the licensing fee.
Thank you. Let me ask legal counsel, Brad, if you are prepared to field a question on this issue. Through a motion, through an amendment here, can we either waive or delay the payment until further discussion on what we do in the case of payments to be applied toward cost when they're not going to be useful? Or should we wait till we do our whole bill? Because, I mean, I could move to waive the fee, I suppose, if that's amenable to the council. But the question becomes is, what's best?
I'm going to turn to the Director on this one and see if I...
I believe our code is very clear that in order for the Director to accept a compliance permit, it must be complete and include that five-thousand-dollar fee. So in order to file for this permit, to get before the city council, to request additional time, they had to pay that fee. It was a request of council that we work with the city attorney's office to come up with an ordinance that the city council would then consider whether they wanted to allow the successful applicants to put this five-thousand, five-thousand-dollar fee towards their license fee, and we are working with the city attorney's office on that legislation. It would be, would apply to everyone.
Okay, then my thought is that we could consider this, and as we draft that other bill, which is going to come in February, we address this issue, too. You've already said you were working with them, and I think it could wrap in its germane. So I would suggest to the applicant that they wait and see, because I think it could be taken care of in that period of time, well before May fourth. So if that's amenable to you, Mayor Pro Tem, that would, I will be making a motion to approve and also taking under advisement for us to telling, it's unofficial, I guess, to tell the council, to tell the applicant to wait on the five thousand. They've already paid it. They're out of pocket, and they conformed to the requirements. But the requirements could change, and in the sense, we can change them backwards in certain circumstances, because it makes sense, I think, in this particular case. So if you're ready for a motion, I will move for approval of item fifty-five.
Before, if you don't mind.
And before we vote, Counselman Barlow.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselman Coffin and Mayor Pro Tem. I just have a couple questions, Karen, so that I understand the application before's. And correct me if I'm wrong, because this is how I'm understanding it. The applicant before's, do they, do they not have a compliance certificate from the state? Question number one.
This is their cultivation facility, and yes, they were issued a state certificate. They were issued a local compliance permit by this council, which expired in November. They are now asking for a new one.
For a new one or an extension?
They're asking, in the form of a new compliance permit, they are asking to extend the time they have to construct and get open. Originally, all of our applicants were to be open within one year, and the state certificates originally were set for one year, and these applicants had to request to the state an extension to the May fourth deadline. The May fourth deadline with the state is when they may consider revocation for anybody that is not moving forward with their building and getting their business open.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that clarification.
That's why we suggested the May fourth deadline with the ability, if they're substantially complete, so that we coincide with the state.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Counselman Barlow. Counselman Coffin, would you like to make a motion? I made the motion to approve, subject to all conditions. Does the motion on the floor? Please vote. And please post. And that motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're not done yet. Agenda item fifty-six. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance, new compliance permit for medical marijuana establishment dispensary, New Leaf CLV Dispensary, doing business as New Leaf CLV Dispensary at sixteen-hundred Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite one-fifty. This is in Ward Three. Counselman Coffin. Mrs. Duddleston.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This applicant for dispensary was rated as recommended for consideration by the Business Licensing Division when originally considered for a compliance permit by city council on October twenty-eighth, 2015. Land use for the original proposed location was denied by the city council, and a compliance permit was also denied. New Leaf Dispensary was ranked by the state within the original twelve dispensary positions and issued a state provisional certificate. New Leaf Dispensary has submitted this compliance permit application with a change of location. The new proposed location was approved for a special use permit for medical marijuana sales, land use at this location, which is sixteen-hundred South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite one-fifty. The State of Nevada revoked the state provisional certificate of New Leaf pursuant to the court order dated December fourteenth, 2015 of the Eighth Judicial District Court in GB Sciences Nevada LLC versus State of Nevada et al. At this point in time, this applicant does not have a state provisional certificate and cannot obtain a business license to operate a medical marijuana dispensary within the city of Las Vegas. The council may desire to hear from the applicant the reasons for requesting a compliance permit at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Duddleston. Counselman, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I do, but before the applicant speaks. You've had two bites at the apple, Pooey, so I hope that the third wouldn't be just a nibble, and so you could restate briefly what you've said before and make reference to your remarks the two previous times so that they can be placed in the record on this item.
And Ms. Pemzret, please put your name back on the record.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, Pooey Pemzret, for the third time on behalf of New Leaf CLV Dispensary. As the council knows, New Leaf was awarded a state provisional at the outset of the process and received a number three ranking in the entire jurisdiction. Counselwoman Tarkanian and the council did not favor the original location and therefore denied it, instructing New Leaf to proceed and find an alternate location. So for approximately ten months, we've labored under that apprehension, located a site, as Ms. Duddleston put on the record, that has a pre-existing SUP located at sixteen-hundred Las Vegas Boulevard. Simultaneously, litigation initiated by GB Sciences challenged the state's ability to award a provisional when you don't have an SUP at the time of the application. Acres Medical, a come-lately applicant, achieved a rescoring in front of Judge Kaddish, Department Six, State Court, was able to re-rank their score, still not approaching New Leaf's top-three ranking, and somehow was able to catapult into another litigation between GB Sciences and New Leaf. And the court had ordered that because the city council had denied New Leaf's original location, that the state was not authorized to issue New Leaf a provisional. We believe the court's order was erroneous based on the sheer fact that there was no one that had an SUP when they applied to the state. And secondly, this contradicts the relocation statutes, as well as the contemporaries of this honorable judge, the other two judges who've ruled and upheld the state process. So ultimately, I understand the city council's position, because New Leaf does not have a provisional. Your hands are somewhat tied, but I do want to put on the record that at some point, if the Supreme Court should reverse the district court decision, you would have, which you've already have granted, Acres Medical a compliance certificate, and they may have shovels in the ground. Fortunately, on the record in court, they have acknowledged their proceeding at their own risk. So I just want to thank the city council for your continuous consideration, but also impress that this has been a very difficult and trying process, that New Leaf has done nothing but respect the council's wishes, done everything to honor the instructions, and you are essentially going to have to award or have awarded a less qualified applicant, at least in the eyes of the state.
Thank you, Ms. Pemzret. Counselman Coffin.
Thank you, Ms. Pemzret. I know that's the second or third time you've said that you believe you're more qualified, and we know you're very qualified. We try not to make these, or allow these subjective judgments from the plaintiffs to be on the, you know, on the record here, because we all know we're better than each other. I will say this, that you are good, and I've seen you, and we've all gotten to know you and your company better over the last year and a half since the rush of 2013 and 14, and now it's already 16, and still the last legislative session did not address the problems that were created by the bill in nineteen thirteen, 2013. Consequently, I think the court, and I'm not sure that there's any limit to what the Supreme Court can do, but when this reaches the court, it may very well order the state to issue a new license. It may also then order us to receive you, in which case we'll have to be on our feet here trying to figure out what to do. So, you know, we could end up with thirteen licensees if the state says so. It's at the court, and we'll obey the court. So I wish you well. I'm going to move to deny, because we can't approve you. And the reason for denial is going to be just one brief one, and that is that because you don't have a state provisional certificate, it's been rescinded due to a court order. We know, everybody in the world knows, that that could be up in the air, but that is what we are forced to do today. So that is my motion.
Counselman, before you make that motion, because of what Ms. Pemzret has put on the record, would it be more prudent to allow them to withdraw without prejudice in case they wish to bring this item back? And I guess I'd pose that to...
I'm not quite sure. I have to ask the legal counsel what that motion would mean. I mean, I've made a motion to approve, but tell me what it is you're suggesting.
Well, if it's still in court, if they withdraw without prejudice, I believe Ms. Duddleston plumbed me up, but they are allowed to make re-application within a twelve-month period. If they are denied, they have to wait twelve months before they can reapply.
Of course, you can tell us.
Am I correct? Am I correct? Mrs. Duttleson?
This is not a, a privileged license. This is a compliance permit. The city, um, the director of planning may open this process for new applicants at, at any time in consultation with the city manager. So it would just be to a new, uh, permit. I do believe, under our code, if they are denied a, um, compliance permit, it is one year before they can be considered again under that code.
So that being said, if the applicant were to ask you, councilman, for withdrawal without prejudice because it's still in the court process, I'm just giving that option to you and the applicant to consider. That's all.
Thank you.
I'll support what you're making.
I'm going to leave it out of the motion, Mayor Protem, but recognizing that we are common sense people up here and recognizing that this is now out of our hands, it is in the hands of a competent Supreme Court. And if I know Justice Hardy and the rest of the justices, they're going to find justice for you and, uh, they are not shy about telling the state when they are wrong. They're not shy about telling us if they're wrong. So they will listen to your fourth bite of the apple there and I wish you well. Thank you very much. My motion stands.
Very well. There's a motion to deny. Please vote and please post.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, before you-
Please.
Before you cast your vote, is there a way we could potentially obey this until we get some clarification from the court on how we're going to, on how this is going to proceed forward?
Unfortunately, Councilman Coffin made a motion to deny and we've already voted and posted the, the vote as, 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 as passing. Um, I, I, I believe we're done essentially. And I hate to say that because I think perhaps additional communication should have taken place before today. So.
And if I might add, this is all again after the fact. Your case wouldn't be as ripe at the Supreme Court if you were simply obeyed here at this point. They would say seek relief again at the local level and if you're denied, then you really have that problem. And I'm just a lawmaker, not a lawyer, but there's a difference and I, I sense that you shorted the threshold for the court's full application of its authority. Now, please don't comment on that, but that's just my, my feeling because I don't want to get in an argument with a lawyer and be told I just don't know what I'm talking about.
Thank you for being with us.
It's too embarrassing.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin, and thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
You bet. All right, we are on agenda item 57. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment dispensary, Compassionate Care of Las Vegas, doing business as Compassionate Care of Las Vegas LLC at 2601 Highland Drive. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. Mrs. Duttleson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This applicant was awarded a compliance permit on October 28th, 2014. The applicant was not awarded a state provisional certificate and has not been subject to one of the lawsuits concerning state rankings. At this point in time, the applicant does not have a state provisional certificate and cannot obtain a business license to operate a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Las Vegas. The council may desire to hear from the applicant the reasons for requesting a compliance permit at this time. For your information, the original application was, uh, to the city was rated as meets minimum criteria and the location was found appropriate, uh, for land use. However, in order to secure a business license, the applicant would, would be required to obtain a state registration certificate.
Thank you, Mrs. Duttleson. I see the applicant present. Please state your name for the record.
Brian Hardy with the law firm of Marquis Arbott Coffin on behalf of the applicant, Compassionate Care of Las Vegas.
Mr. Hardy, welcome back. Uh, councilwoman.
Move to approve the new compliance permit, subject to staff's conditions in total.
I will read those conditions.
Please do, Mrs. Duttleson.
Mayor Protem, if approved, it would be subject to the following conditions. Must secure and maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Plans be reviewed and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. The compliance permit would expire on May 4th, 2016.
Very well. Does the applicant agree to those conditions?
We do.
That being said, councilwoman has made a motion to approve, subject to those conditions. Please vote and please post.
Question on the motion, if you don't mind.
Question. Councilman Barlow.
Just going back and point of clarification, the, is there a difference between this applicant and the last applicant in relation to no state provisional?
The last, the last applicant, New Leaf, was awarded a state provisional. However, they were denied a compliance permit by the city council. So they have not been for a dispensary in the local process. Compassionate Care of Las Vegas was originally, um, approved as a compliance certificate by this city council. However, they did not rank in the top 12 and were never issued a state provisional certificate.
Okay, so this is just in the reverse. The last applicant had a state provisional, no city provisional, and the applicant befores today currently has a city provisional, no state.
Correct. That city provisional expired, um, November 4th of 2015.
And to your knowledge, to your awareness, will the state provide additional provisionals in relation to the applicant befores today or any other applicant that has a city provisional?
The, the state cannot. Those, um, dispensaries were allocated under, under the, uh, formula by the state law and, uh, allocated by the county per that. And at this point in time, the state has made it very clear that they will issue 12 and only 12 certificates within the city of Las Vegas unless a, a court or the legislature changes that.
Because to my understanding and specifically during briefings on yesterday, and I know Councilman Beer spoke to this, that the legislature stated that they wouldn't take this issue up until the next legislative session. And so I'm just trying to understand if in fact that is the case, then why would we be recommending to move forward with the applicant if in fact the state is not going to issue any additional provisionals? I, I don't understand why, why, why we're moving forward.
Uh, under, under our code, anyone can apply. When we open a provisional, uh, a compliance permit, we bring those forward for council consideration. Staff has no recommendation on this at all. You may want to hear from the applicant-
Okay.
-why they believe, uh, an additional four months.
So you understand where, what I stated, correct?
I understand.
So you're moving at your own risk, spending money?
Correct.
Running the risk of, of, of not receiving anything by May 4th or, or even meeting the deadline by May 4th? Why are you doing that?
Here, here's the issue that we've run into and as you've seen, uh, and I think Councilman Coffin probably put it best I've heard in a long time when he said the state, uh, was clumsy in exactly what they did in this entire process. There was transparency issues. We have seen the state already once change the score of one applicant and we've requested that the state look at and review our score. But we can't do that unless we have the, are able to continue with this compliance permit, which is what we're seeking today. We, unlike the, those who were here previously, have gone ahead and had the approval. We, we met all the requirements that the city-
At the city, at the city level.
At the city level, correct.
However, you did not rank, at least within the top 12 according to the state, at the state level for the state provisional.
Based upon a process that they've now admitted was flawed and had errors. And we're asking them to reevaluate ours. See if we, if they can go ahead and reevaluate that process.
Okay, so Karen, Ed, what takes place May 4th in relation to the deadline at the state level if in fact the state does make a change and they don't move the May 4th date? What, what happens to the applicant?
What the, uh, under what we're proposing with the conditions that I'm proposing on May 4th, their compliance permit would expire. They would no longer have a relationship with the city of Las Vegas, um, for any kind of, of approvals, um, from the city on, uh, at the end of May 4th. What the state has explained to us is that their deadline is May 4th. If a local government is not moving forward with an applicant and the applicant is not substantially completion or moving towards completion, they will consider revocation of permits.
Okay.
What that process will be, they have not shared with us-
Right.
-and what their standard for moving forward will be, they have not shared with us.
Okay. So I'm going to stand behind, uh, the state. I don't believe that they're going to take this up, um, having spoken to a number of legislators. So I won't be in support of, of moving this item forward. So I'll be voting no on this item. Thank you.
Yeah, please post the vote.
Your honor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Coffin.
I want to speak in favor of the motion.
Okay.
To approve. And the reason is, is because there is a point to be made here. This is a, we're really keeping them moving in the process. If you turn them down now, you will have said to the state, "We totally agree. Approve with your process" and that, uh, they didn't issue it, they don't have it, they're not in the line. In other words, they're not moving forward. If we approve, they are moving forward at their own risk. But we're just giving them another three and a half months to find out whether or not they can shoot craps. I, I think the idea is that the court is probably going to act pretty quickly on this stuff. I, I suspect there's going to be a, a swift resolution, at least at the petition. And consequently, that decision on the other cases may affect this decision. The, uh, we wouldn't be in this, uh, in this position if we had, uh, a year and a half ago or, yeah, almost a year and a half ago, if we had waited till the state gave us the licenses and told us who would be, then we wouldn't have these dozen items on the agenda today and the dilemma we're in and the lawsuits. But here we are with what we created and what the state created with their clumsy process, which by the way, borders on criminal and in Frank, I'm amazed that there wasn't an indictment, uh, issued to people who work for the state as to favoritism and, uh, their process. So with that, I will support the motion to give them an additional three and a half months of life.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman Tarkanian, did you want to add anything before I asked the city clerk to post the vote?
No.
Has everyone voted? Councilman Coffin. Okay, okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item 58. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment dispensary. Samantha, Samantha, doing business as Samantha's Remedies at 3500 West Sahara Avenue. Again, this is in city councilwoman Lois Tarkanian's Ward 1. And Mrs. Duttleson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This applicant was awarded a compliance permit by the city of Las Vegas on October 28th, 2014. The applicant was not awarded a state provisional certificate, however, has submitted information stating that they are the subject of one of the lawsuits concerning state rankings. At this point in time, the applicant does not have a state provisional certificate and cannot obtain a business license to operate a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Las Vegas. The council may desire to hear from the applicant the reasons for requesting a compliance permit at this time. The original application by Samantha's Remedies was rated as meets minimum criteria and the location was approved for land use for a medical marijuana dispensary. Um, however, in order to obtain a business license, the applicant would require a state provisional certi- registration certificate.
Thank you, Mrs. Duttleson. I see the applicant present. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, Jim DiFiore, Mayor Protem and members of the council. And with me today is Bill and Armenia Dropkin.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I move to approve a new compliance permit, subject to staff's conditions.
Mrs. Duttleson.
Are you aware of staff's conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I do have a question.
Okay, let, let her read the conditions and then we'll have your question.
The conditions would be as follows. Must secure and maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Plans be reviewed and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. Compliance permit to expire May 4th, 2016.
Thank you very much. Those are the conditions, Mr. DiFiore. And you have a question?
And I, we do accept the conditions. However, I would like to ask if, if in fact the pending lawsuit with the Supreme Court has not been heard by May 4th of 2016 when the compliance permit is due to expire, due to expire, uh, what would happen then? Would we be allowed to apply for a new compliance permit, uh, pending the outcome of the lawsuit?
I will defer that to Mrs. Duttleson.
Uh, the state has informed us that they can open that state process once per calendar year and they have, um, are waiting to see what happens between now and May 4th before they make a decision on whether they would open or not the state would open. Um, we would consult with the city manager on her direction to open, um, at that time.
And that question being answered, Mr. DiFiore, I think all eyes are on these court cases in regards to this, what's going on. So this council is fully cognizant of what's happening and what is not happening at the current moment. We'll just have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay.
So I hope that answers your question. That makes it. Council, uh, Councilman Barlow, do you have a comment before Councilwoman?
I do. Uh, Councilman Coffin just showed, just shared some key information with me that, um, brings, uh, these items that'll be forced, uh, into a much clearer perspective. Um, and so I, I understand now why, uh, the, uh, extension is, and Karen, um, no fault of your own, but Councilman Coffin, I guess he has a, a clear explanation than what staff shared with me on yesterday. So on the last vote, um, I'm not sure, Mayor Protem, if we, if, if I can just inform the clerk or do we have to open him back up to, for me to vote in favor of the last item?
I believe-
But in, in, but I'm going to go ahead and move forward with, uh, the recommendation that he or that councilwoman has, um, moving forward. But I would like to redress the last item. Item 57.
Previous item.
Okay, we can do that after we hear this item if that's-
Thank you.
-amenable to you, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Didn't I make the motion already?
There's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post that vote.
Thank you very much.
That motion passes. Almost. That motion passes.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Congratulations.
Your honor.
Councilman.
Am I informed correctly from legal that we have to move to rescind? Item 57, I saw move.
The member who voted for it, yes.
Our action on item 57.
There's a motion to rescind, uh, gen- to rescind agenda item 57. Please vote.
What does?
Please post that vote. Motion passes. Okay, we're back to agenda item 57. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Move to approval with all staff's conditions.
Okay. There's a motion to approve agenda item 57 and to allow Councilman Barlow to vote. Please vote and post that vote. Okay, that motion passes again. Thank you, councilman. Now, we are on agenda item 59. This is discussion for possible action regarding the approval of a new compliance permit for a medical marijuana establishment dispensary, GB Sciences Nevada LLC, doing business as GB Sciences at 921 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite Number 100 in Councilwoman Coffin's Ward 3. Uh, Mrs. Duttleson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This applicant was awarded a compliance permit by the city council on October 28th, 2014. The applicant was not awarded a state provisional certificate, however, has submitted, submitted information stating that they are the subject of one of the lawsuits concerning state rankings. At this point in time, the applicant does not have a state provisional certificate and cannot obtain a business license to operate a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Las Vegas. The council may desire to hear from the applicant the reasons for requesting a compliance permit at this time. The original application was rated by business licensing as recommended for consideration by this council and the location has appropriate land use for a medical marijuana dispensary.
Thank you very much. I see the applicant present. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mayor Protem, members of the council, Matthew Seibert, 630 South Fourth Street. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, GB Sciences Nevada. Um, obviously, as we've all heard this morning, um, we're kind of at the center of all this litigation.
Good for you.
It's, it's been a long and arduous road, uh, let me tell you. Uh, having said that, we, we, uh, we would like to approve of the new compliance permit. Um, we are confident that we're going to come out ahead on all this litigation. We'd like to get moving and start building our business.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Mrs. Duttleson, you want to add to that?
Um, I would just add, if the council moves for approval, the, the following conditions would be suggested. Must secure and maintain a current state provisional registration certificate. Plans be reviewed and approved by the director prior to consideration of a business license. Compliance permit to expire May 4th, 2016.
Do you agree to those conditions should you be approved?
We do.
Thank you very much. Uh, councilman, uh, Councilwoman Tarkanian, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, your honor. And just let me make sure I understand the consequences of the, uh, of the action. Uh, this does not increase the number of licensees we would have approved if we vote to approve, correct? We would still be at 12?
Correct. The state has only issued, um, 12 certificates. They have informed us they will only issue 12. Um, so, uh, we've, those are the only applicants that we're moving towards licensing with. The council, this council approved many compliance permits. The state only approved 12.
All right. So I guess the applicant understands that their fate's in the hands of the court in many ways. So, you know, we understand this situation. It's already been overstated by me. Thank you. So I now move for approval of this item, subject to the conditions as stated by licensing staff.
There's a motion for approval of this item, subject to those conditions. Please vote and please post. That motion passes. Congratulations and good luck. We are on agenda item number 60. This is a discussion and possible action regarding the approval of a restricted gaming license for Sartini Gaming LLC, doing business as PT's Brewing Company at 3101 North Tenea Way. This is in Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward 1. And staff, please.
For the record, Mary McElhome, this is-
Hey, Mrs. Duttleson.
For the record, Mary McElhome, business license section manager. Um, Sartini Gaming LLC is requesting a restricted gaming license for 15 slot machines as a slot root operator doing business at PT's Brewing Company. They will be having 15 bar top slot machines, a full kitchen with six to eight lounge and dining seats, and staff recommends approval for a permanent license. and staff recommends approval for a permanent license.
Thank you, Mrs. McElhome. I see this applicant present.
Sean Higgins, 911 West Charleston, uh, STH Strategies, on behalf of the applicant, Sartini Gaming, and, uh, we would request that, uh, council, uh, provide us with a permanent license today, and I would also be happy to ask any, answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I and Councilman Beers, um, toured the area, the, whatever we want to call it now. But at any case, I just want to say it was excellent. It met all criteria, and I think it's going to be a great success. It fits with all of our, uh, legal ramifications, so I move to approve.
Do you, uh, are you approving a permanent license?
I move, yes, a permanent license as recommended by staff.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. Your Honor? Uh, please, Councilman Beers.
Uh, I just want to point out how remarkable this project is. Uh, the, kind of the back story we've all been working with, with the slot parlors is that when the smoking ban came in, many, many taverns closed their kitchen, just as a matter of economics. They could no longer sustain it. And, uh, that kinda led to the evolution of the tavern industry away from traditional taverns. These guys are actually taking one such facility and putting a kitchen back in it. Uh, this is gonna be a great addition to the neighborhood. I rarely go to Ward 1, uh, but I'm, I might start.
Well, may I add to that? Your Honor, may I add to that too?
Councilman Coffin, please.
Yeah, I'd like to gild the lily a little bit here. Uh, Councilman Beers and I have had experience in the sausage making machine in Carson City, so we've seen this. And the reason why it's best done this way, as opposed to initiative, is because of the very reason that Councilman Beers points out. An initiative to ban smoking had ramifications far beyond what the voters could have ever figured. You vote on something and you freeze the hands of legislators and local governments for years, and you can't treat people fairly. In this case, it created a whole industry, and it really killed a bunch of businesses. And people didn't expect to do that when they voted against smoking in certain places. So, that's the outcome. So, all those who face initiatives, frankly, from my opinion, vote no on all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did you want to add anything to that before I asked to post the vote?
No, you know, my councilman friend down the end of the row, he lives in Camelot. What can I say? He has no idea of the history and the hard work people in Ward 1 had to do, and he sneaks into Ward 1 often, I know. Thank you.
I think we're waiting for you to vote.
For, for the record, Your Honor, I was raised in Ward 1.
Okay, there. I think that will satisfy the councilwoman's concern. Please post that vote. Uh, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. De.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Have a great day. All right, we're moving into Boards and Commissions for Possible Action. This is Agenda Item 61, for Possible Action. Uh, City of Las Vegas Citizens Advisory Committee to the Las Vegas Pre-Development Agency, Jermaine Dykes, has a term expiration of January 23rd, 2016. Mr. Dykes was appointed to his first term in January of 2013. Terms, terms for this board are three years, and members are limited to twofold and consecutive terms. Mr. Dykes serves in a Category G, Community Member seat for Ward 5. He is eligible, is eligible and wishes to be reappointed. Ward 5, uh, Councilman Barlow, you, would you like to reappoint Mr. Dykes? Move for approval. There's a motion to approve? Please post. That motion passes. Thank you. We are moving into the Recommending Committee. This is Agenda Item 62. These are bills eligible for adoption at this meeting. Bill Number 2015-95. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Your Honor, Bill Number 2015-95, in order to amend LVMC Title VI to establish a business license fee for transportation network companies, to make transportation network company business license eligible for multi-jurisdictional business licensing, and to provide further related matters.
Thank you. Mrs. Delson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Assembly Bills 175 and 176 of the 2015 Legislative Session authorized the establishment of net, transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft and Wiz, um, that are regulated by the Department of Transportation. AB 176 does not prohibit local government from requiring transportation network companies or their driver to obtain a local business license, or to pay any business license fee in the same manner that is generally applicable to any other business that operates within the local government's jurisdiction. The legislative restriction, um, did preempt local regulation and assigned regulation of companies and drivers to the Nevada Department of Transportation, uh, or Nevada Transportation Authority. It did restrict local governments to require business licenses for the sole purpose of revenue collection, and local governments cannot impose any other requirements on the company or the driver that are not of general applicability to persons who operate motor, motor vehicles within the jurisdiction. The, um, NRS 268095s gives cities like Las Vegas the absolute right, under our business licensing code, to fix, impose, collect, and collect for revenue or regulation or both, a business license tax on all character of lawful trades, callings, industries, occupations, professions, and business, businesses conducted within its corporate limits. AB 176 does nothing to take away the city's ability to require a license and a fee pursuant to this section, as long as the fee is generally applicable to all businesses within the city. Through NRS 268095, is generally permitted to oppose, oppose, the city is generally permitted to impose either a flat fee or a gross revenue fee on all businesses operating within its corporate boundaries. And the city isn't, uh, through this, um, ordinance, is proposing a flat fee in a manner similar that, that we impose on hundreds of businesses located within the City of Las Vegas or operating within our corporate boundaries. This proposal is a flat fee license for a company based on the number of active drivers during a six-month period. An active driver means that, that those vehicles who act, activated and transported passengers during a month averaged of the total number of months over a six-month period. The fee is some $50 semiannually per active driver, it, and has the provision that would allow us to work with, with other jurisdictions on a multi-jurisdictional license. There was a First Amendment that I read into the record in, um, uh, December, um, which removes the requirement to provide the individual driver's names to business licensing, clarifies the calculation for active driver, and corrects the, in, in incorrect reference to Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.04020, which should have been Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.04030. Um, while these changes were noted and read before the council at a previous hearing on this ordinance, the city attorney has respect that they may, that they may want to read the First Amendment of this bill again.
Mr. Gerbick.
We, uh, passed out early this morning a copy of this bill, 2015-109, First Amendment, that have all the changes that Ms. Delson just put on the record. And so, if there, if you're in agreement with those changes, then a motion would be made to approve this with the proposed First Amendment.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any comments on this?
Your Honor. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Coffin.
If I may just start some discussion on this. I, um, I'm uncomfortable with what has been proposed by people outside this, uh, council, outside the City of Las Vegas, the way this bill came to us with the un, almost, um, unspeakable language coming out of the legislature, essentially saying, "We cannot do our duty," that we must pass something that is proposed by a company, the bill written by the company, given to the legislative lawyers and certain legislators, and said, "Pass this, and use your police powers, but prohibit the local authority from using police powers as we feel we need to do to protect the community." That's boiling it down to a nut, I think, uh, what the language is, and that's why we have this contorted ordinance, and a contorted, almost, frankly, insulting letter from the transportation network companies, at least two of them, Lyft and Uber, who are too big for Nevada, and certainly too big for Las Vegas, in their opinion, so that their bill should be paramount over all thinking. And I just disagree. And I know that somewhere along the line, our role as public servants requires that we do take whatever measures we can to know who is out there picking up residents, citizens of Las Vegas, visitors, and taking them in their vehicle, driving them over city streets for money, and then depositing them wherever they may, whether it be the airport, or the Speedway, or downtown, or at Caesar's Palace. The point is, this legislation tries to take away our authority, and the amendment as drafted by our council, as it stands, is a good amendment. Granted, there's a big disagreement. They don't like the fact that it costs them a little bit of money. Uh, according to our staff, the hundred dollars fee we, we want to oppose is about what it costs us to issue a license and maintain a license. Maybe that's an arguable point. Maybe the initial license issuance is, is appropriate, maybe a renewal is, is less. Maybe, we could discuss that if they were willing to discuss, Mayor Protem, but until they appear and say, "We're willing to consider your feelings and your thoughts and your responsibilities as public officials," I haven't heard it. I do know this, that these people who are riders, who are drivers, are applying to the state for a business license. But they're told they don't have to apply to the city for a business license? You know, that's really land of Wizard of Oz, I guess, or should say, uh, Alice in Wonderland, because in, you take the statutes, other statutes require now that to get a city business license, you have to apply through the state, and then we all get it together. So, you can't get a business license with the city unless you have a state license, and vice versa. But now they want to cut us out of the picture. This is not about revenue. It isn't all that much money in our big budget, but I'm worried about public safety. So, that's where I stand. I'm unhappy. I'd like to see this amended, but I want to hear the other members discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. Anyone else wish to chime in on this? I will, then myself. I'm a little concerned just that the mayor is not here today to participate in this agenda item. We cannot obey this, uh, item any longer as the ordinance will die, I believe, on February 1st. Am I correct, Mrs. Delson?
I would have the clerk answer.
I'm sorry.
Yes, your clerk.
Sorry.
February 1st.
Thank you. Um, I am, uh, I am moved that the two, uh, companies came together, uh, a little late in the game, to come up with some kind of a solution to recommend to your staff, Mrs. Delson, but have not had the opportunity to present that to you. Um, as of, uh, we got this, uh, letter late on Thursday, and, uh, had the opportunity to mull over for the weekend, but I think it's a step in the right direction in regards to them, at least talking to the, to your staff and working in that direction. So, with that, Councilman Barlow, is there a motion?
Could I ask a question, please?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I understand why, um, we couldn't obey it. I understand the timing in that. But also, there's a problem if we should drop it or strike it. Isn't there a time problem later on down the line? I, I questioned today about it, but I didn't have enough time before the meeting started to get a good answer.
Mrs. Delson.
We do have temporary licenses issued to Uber and Lyft. The first one expires in March. The second one, um, expires, I believe, April 1st. Um, so we do have those temporaries out there at this point in time. I would defer to the city attorney and the clerk on, on their timing issues. If we have a new proposal for, uh, transportation network companies, I know we would have to go back through the business impact statement process. And that does take time.
Uh, Betsy, I was speaking with you about it, and there, the question came up, and I don't know if legal can handle it or not, but, uh, oh, there you are, I was looking down there. Um, but if you could help me in that, because I have had some, uh, people whom I respect who have asked me about that, and I checked into the abeyance, and I understand that, and they understand that. But isn't there also a problem that if we have the, uh, if we carry it over, we miss a time limit or something? And I'm only bringing this up in such a strange way because I didn't have time to have a conversation this morning.
Please, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, Mayor Protem, if I may. Jim Lewis, for the record, from the city attorney's office. Uh, Councilwoman, what you're asking about, I think, is our 60-day period in which a bill must be heard, uh, before it dies, uh, from the date of publication. And in fact, on, I think the clerk says February 1st, this bill would reach its 60th day from the date of publication of the newspaper. Once that day hits, it, it dies as a matter of, of law. And so, if it's heard today, and act on, you can hear and act upon it today, if we obey, it dies as a matter of law.
I see.
Because we can't, we couldn't even hold a special session, because our charter says you can't pass ordinances at special sessions of the city council. So, it's either today, or we begin anew.
But in the meantime, they would carry on with their temporary licenses until we begin anew?
Uh, correct. I'll defer to, to Ms. Delson, but that would be correct.
I just wanted to.
Mrs. Delson.
Uh, yes, they are currently operating under temporary licenses.
I just wanted it on the record that we did look into these, and the problem does occur. We certainly, if we don't feel this is right, wouldn't want it to continue, uh, temporary license, just because of the timing.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, uh, for recognizing me for the second time, Mayor Protem. Look, I, I said this is just not about the money. It is about safety. I think that Mayor Protem accurately pointed out that the, that the two major Lyft companies, Lyft and Uber, at least, sorry, Lyft for additional plug, they came to us with a proposal. Frankly, we were looking for a hundred dollars, they came with a dollar. That's about the size of it. So, let's say they started, and, uh, on the golf course, I'm afraid I had a laugh to doubt and gone back to the bar. So, if we want to try to do what we accomplished, I don't want to obey, I want to pass an ordinance, but I, if they're willing to meet us partway on revenue, maybe we can agree to it in number, and I, and subject, obviously, the city manager would have to consider, because she's got the budget to handle. But, uh, let's suppose we just said, and we proposed, and passed, it might be an ordinance with a $50 fee, but, but offered an incentive to these drivers and these companies by saying something, and I'm going to seek the guidance of the city manager, let's say we did something like, if you get a fingerprinted identification, that you do the things we now require of transportation companies, and provide that to us, we'll give you an incentive. We'll charge you a lot less. Let's say not $50, let's some other number, $25? I mean, I don't know. I, I want the city manager to pipe up here, because I think it's important, because it's her budget we're messing with here. She knows what she has to have to, to function. She knows what licensing has to have to function. Why don't I throw that out as a possible, uh, meeting point?
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Beers.
Thanks. It's, uh, I guess the hundred-dollar vehicle was pulled from our current licensing of limousines. And I guess if we reduce these folks to below the limousine charge, do we have to reduce the limousine licenses to the same level as this? And how do we handle that budgetarily?
I believe that would be a question for Mrs. Delson to attempt to answer.
When selecting the fee and the fee level in your flat fees, we did look through our ordinance to find similar in other transportation type of industries, um, and place this where those, those are. But would we have to go back and change those? I do not believe that the city attorney would tell us that we would.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Please, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, Councilman Beers, I do not believe that we'd have to, to match a, an incentive fee, uh, if, if that's the way the council wanted to, to take this.
Does that answer your question, Councilman Beers? Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, you know, we've been kind of going around and round in circles on this for a while, and we obeyed it last time, and, uh, I wanted to make sure we didn't obey it again. Um, in my mind, uh, we, we just want to treat, um, these transportation networks like Uber and Lyft the same as other companies in the City of Las Vegas, and I guess the one that's closest are cab companies. And, uh, if I have it correct, uh, cab companies pay a hundred dollars a year per vehicle, They don't.
The, the transporta, the incremental motor, uh, transportation services companies pay a hundred dollars per vehicle. The cabs are a little bit different, because we also had a state preemption, I don't remember how long ago, a decade or so ago, where the state changed the state law and said, "Local governments can assess a fee for a cab, but you can't keep it. You have to give it to the taxi cab authority." So, the city council repealed that fee for the cabs. However, the fees for all the other transportation, uh, vehicles are the hundred-dollar fee. Uh, so, it's kind of bifurcated, and it's in this exact same section of code that, uh, So it's kind of bifurcated, and it's in this exact same section of code that we are presenting an amendment to today that would include the transportation network companies.
Right. So whether we collect the money and keep it or the money is sent somewhere else, it's $100 a car per year.
Correct.
All right. So that's what we're doing here, right? And this ordinance is basically charging $100 a car per year for these companies to operate in the city of Las Vegas. It's the same thing that we do with other companies, so in my mind, it's the fairest thing to do. It's, I mean, I've talked to Uber and Lyft. They're very nice folks, and they want to do things differently, and I understand where they're coming from. But bottom line is, to do business in the city of Las Vegas, you need a business license. And the closest business license for companies like this is $100 a car per year. It's $50 every six months. So let's just pass the ordinance. In my mind, I just want to vote for this ordinance and put this into effect. And, you know, sometime down the road, if things change, then we can always change ordinances, but this is probably the closest way to match how we're currently doing business in the city. So I support the ordinance. I want to pass it today so we can move on and see how things go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anthony. Before I refer to you, Councilman Coffin, again, I do have four speakers that have filled out speaker cards to talk on this item. You guys don't have to move yet because if the, through the city attorney's office, this item has been heard at a previous recommending committee and received public input. That being said, if the motion, if there's a motion made to vote this ordinance, which has already been heard at the recommending committee, there will be no discussion on it from the public. However, if this motion, if this agenda item gets amended again during this discussion, then I will open it up for public comment at that time. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I think the best thing to do, specifically being that you have the comment cards and individuals wanting to speak, I believe, you know, having heard from both Uber and Lyft and other special interest groups, let's just go ahead and see how this vote goes with moving for approval. My recommendation would be to move for approval of the business licenses director recommendation. And if it fails, then we can basically move forward with what you have before you. So at this time, I will just move to see how the votes will land on her recommendation moving forward. So my motion at this time would be to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this ordinance, subject to all conditions and any First Amendments that are attached to this bill number 2015-95, which came out of recommending, which I chair. That is my motion at this time, Mayor Protem.
And I have a comment on that motion.
There's a motion to approve this agenda item with the First Amendment.
As the First Amendment, that's correct.
Okay. Councilman Coffin?
Comment on the motion? I'm not going to be argumentative on it. I think I want to say that, as I see it, if we approve, even with the First Amendment, because that doesn't have anything to do, I don't believe addresses the fees and the question of whether or not we fingerprint or in some way or another know when striving. Is that fair to say, that that amendment doesn't address my concerns?
Mayor Protem? Please, Mr. Lewis.
Councilman, that is correct.
Okay. So we can have a vote certainly on that motion. I just want to make sure that it's clear that I'm going to vote no, but the reasons why are important. I think that frankly, all we have, because we are hands, our hands are tied to many, to many degrees by the state language. Now, maybe the language would not stand up in a court, and I am not sure, I almost doubt that the city would challenge the legislation if, you know, they wanted to beat us. In other words, it would cost us a lot of money. What we have on our side is the potential for moral squashing, and that is that we have had people come, Lyft and Uber, they have offered us a compromise. Granted, it's inadequate, insulting, but it's a start. And so what I'm thinking about is if we engage before we pass this, because what if it passes? Then we're in, you know, we're going to be ignored. We're going to be in litigation. And so I think maybe if we could keep the ball in the air a little bit longer, it's kind of what we did on the marijuana licenses, we'd have a better chance of ultimate success and protecting the safety of the riders in the community. So that's the only reason I would vote no on a straight approval motion with the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. Mrs. Fretwell, if this fails, this motion fails, where does that put us?
We won't have an ordinance. You, I suppose, could, someone could make another motion to try and revive it in a different way, but we'll revert to the current position. And as those business licenses come up for renewal, we'll deal with those accordingly.
Very well.
Mayor Protem? Are we, the companies are telling us that they think paying us $8.34 a month, that's what it comes out for, for a license, is too much. Is that correct?
Mrs. Duttleson.
Mayor Protem, if I might, under the current licensing schedule that you have, if we were to license these drivers as independent contractors for personal services, the minimum gross license fee is $110 a year.
Oh, so be about eight.
So this is actually on a per-driver basis
About 8.50.
Less than if they were to come in on their own and request a gross fee business license to provide services in the city.
Could I ask, what does a company such as Uber offer as far as benefits are concerned or anything concerned? They don't offer anything, I've been told?
I do not know. I am sorry.
And without opening it up to public comment, Councilman?
Oh, yeah. No, I don't want to go that way, but I was wondering, because it seems to me, and quite honestly, it is a little bit insulting to say that, you know, the way it was done, a dollar, and the county is this and you're that. And I understand the thinking behind it, but I have a concern of what will happen if we don't pass it today.
Very good. I think I'm, I cannot argue with Councilman Coffin's concern about the safety. It's been my, been my concern all the time, and I've shared that with both companies that are party to this. So I think there's a better way, I think there's a better motion if we amended this bill as it is. But currently, a motion has been made to approve, and I think we should vote on that and see where we end up. Please vote. Whoops. Very good.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just for clarification, these licenses expire, their current temporaries expire the beginning of March, the next one, April 1st, I believe, and they will be transitioning to the new category once the clerk has posted it.
In regards to Councilman Coffin's concern for public safety, Ms. Fretwell and Mrs. Duttleson, if I may, can we bring another ordinance back? That if both companies' employees voluntarily, what is it, Ms. Fretwell, we talked about this morning, there's a fingerprint program, I guess, that Uber's participating in in another jurisdiction? And to, to answer or recognize Councilman Coffin's concern about public safety, is there a mechanism whereby if these companies voluntarily had their drivers do fingerprint background, that we could somehow reduce that annual fee from $100 to, say, $50? Can you speak to that?
We're happy to do research on what some of the other cities have done and brief you all on proposals to try and address Councilman Coffin's concern. Absolutely.
Okay. And that's what, that was my concern about this bill, and it's in the condition, it's in now, I think we could do it better by engaging them more with us in that respect. But the motion has passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Duttleson.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Could I just thank all the Lyft people who came here today? And believe me, your presence is not negated. And I wanted to tell you that I respected the manner in which your representatives attempted to have meetings together and worked very hard to do it as soon as they could do it.
Would you all like to stand up and advertise real quick? That's it. Yes, thank you all very much for coming to the city council meeting today. Appreciate your attendance. We are moving on to agenda item 63. This is bill number 2015-105. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have this bill read?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2015-105, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update and clarify the requirements and limitations pertaining to some home occupation permits and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval. Move for approval. There's a motion, please vote. That motion passes. Agenda item 64 is bill number 2015-106. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2015-106, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed and make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval. There's a motion. Mr. Gerbert, you do that so well. Motion passes. We are on agenda item 65. This is bill number 2015-107. Councilman Barlow, would you like it read?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2015 Act 107, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed and make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval. There's a motion, please vote. That passes. We are on agenda item 66. This is bill number 2015-108. Councilman Barlow, would you like it read?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2015-108, in order to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed and make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. That motion passes. We are on agenda item 67. This is bill number 2015-109. Councilman Barlow, would you like it read?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. This is bill number 2015-109, First Amendment, in order to authorize on a temporary basis a partial waiver of the origination charge for new restaurant service bar licenses and to provide for other related matters.
Mayor Protem, through you, if you will, Councilman Anthony, do you have anything to add to this?
It's your bill.
Item, this is your. You good?
He's good. Motion to approve.
As a First Amendment?
First Amendment.
First Amendment. Please vote. That motion passes. We are on agenda item 68. This is bill number 2016-2. Councilman Barlow, would you like it read?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2016-2, in order to amend ordinance number 6479 regarding the extension of the corporate limits of the city to correct the legal description of the annexed territory and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval. There's a motion to approve, please vote. And please post. All right, that motion passes. We are on agenda item 69. This is the recommending committee. Bills eligible for adoption at a later meeting, items 69 through 73, bills 2015-99, 2016-1, and 2016-3 through 2016-5, will be heard at a later meeting. We will move on to the new bills. Agenda item 74, these are new bills, items 74 through 78, bills 2016-6 through 2016-10, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2016. Mr. Gerbert.
Mr. Mayor Protem, with your permission, I would like to introduce the council today to my new intern that will be with us until the end of May. His name is Jonathan Chung. He is at my right, and with your permission, he'll read the new bills today.
Mr. Chung.
Bill number 2016-6, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. Keep going.
Bill number 2016-7, an ordinance to repeal LVMC 10 dot, 10 period 04 period 010, pertaining to interference with a peace officer and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2016-8, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2016-9, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2016-10, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Very good job and welcome. We will enjoy having you here for the short time. Let's see, the new bills, 2016 through, dash 6 through 2016-10 are assigned to council members Barlow, Anthony, and myself. Thank you very much. The morning session of the city council is now in recess. We will start our afternoon session promptly at 1:00 P.M. Thank you, staff. Thank you, staff. Are we on? We're on, okay, good. We will reconvene this city council meeting. We are currently on agenda item seventy-nine for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Yes, we have one item. Well, really, it's two items, eighty-two, eighty-three, and the, it's variant six one two nine seven and SDR six one two nine eight, and it has been requested to be tabled by the applicant.
Very well, and then that's your motion then.
And the motion is to table the item.
Very good. Motion has been made to table. Please post. Councilman Coffin is coming. Councilman Veers is here. Okay, with eighty-two. I'm ahead of myself. Go to agenda item eighty.
Eighty and eighty-one.
Eighty and eighty-one may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed, excuse me, from this portion of the agenda. Agenda item eighty is an extension of time, six two four six eight. The applicant owner Sarkis and Janet Ferchian, on a request for an extension of time for non-conforming use tavern, eight two one North Lamb Boulevard, suite number eleven, which is located in C one in Ward three, Councilman Coffin. Agenda item eighty-one is request for review of condition, RQR six two zero zero, applicant Mr. NNS Bonanza, owner Water Street LLC, on a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP five five four eight seven, for a packaged liquor off sale used within an eighteen hundred and eighty-two square foot general retail establishment at three five nine five west east Bonanza Road, suite number one forty. This is in C one commercial zoning, also in Councilman Coffin's ward. Items eighty and eighty-one are recommended for approval by staff. Both items are public hearings, which I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearings. Councilwoman Tarkanian, do you have a motion to approve these agenda items eighty and eighty-one, please?
Move to approve agenda items eighty and eighty-one.
There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. That motion passes. Items eighty-two and eighty-three have been tabled, which brings us to agenda items eighty-four through eighty-eight. Eighty-four is a general plan amendment, six zero nine seven seven, on a request for general plan amendment from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to SC Service Commercial. Agenda item eighty-five is ZON six zero nine seven eight, on a request for a rezoning from RE Residence Estates to C one limited commercial. Item eighty-six is SUP six zero nine eight zero, on a request for a special use permit for proposed car wash, full service, or auto detailing use. Agenda item eighty-seven, SUP six zero nine eight two, on a request for a special use permit for a beer wine cooler off sale establishment. Agenda item eighty-eight is SDR six zero nine eight three, on a request for site development review plan for a proposed twenty-six hundred square feet restaurant with drive-through, a three thousand six hundred and seventy-five square foot general retail, and one thousand nine hundred and five square foot car wash, full service or auto detailing use, development with a waiver of the corner lot building orientation, and to allow a service or wash bay to face a public right-of-way. The applicant owner is Rainbow Anne LLC, on one point six four acres on the southeast corner of Anne Road and Rainbow Boulevard. Items eighty-six and eighty-eight are Residence Estates, proposed C one commercial zone. The planning commission recommends approval on all items, and staff recommends approval of items eighty-four and eighty-five, and denial of items eighty-six through eighty-eight. These are in Ward four, Councilman Anthony, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mayor Protem, council members. Good afternoon. Richard Gargiago, sixty-seven twenty-five Southeastern, here on behalf of the applicant. Along with me is Mr. Mike Montana. And Mike, will you state your address for the record, please?
Mike Montana, seven nineteen Oakbridge Court, North Las Vegas. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, we first wanted to just say a quick thank you to all of our neighbors. You know, we dragged them out on a couple of football nights and had a meeting, and I'm sure they would have spent their time at home. But with that, again, we wanted to thank them, as well as the planning commission, for getting us to this point. We've compromised on a number of issues. We do understand and concur with the planning commission's recommendations, and ask for your approval. I do have one clarification, though, as you read into the record. I believe with this design before you, we have no waivers now. One of the conditions at the planning commission was to extend our tunnel to not orient towards the street, and we've done that. And it's a condition, so we believe that waiver is not applicable.
Okay. With that said, Mr. Perrigo, did you, Mr. Lawson, either one of you have any input?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The proposed general plan amendment and rezoning are supported by staff as a subject that is located adjacent to two one hundred foot primary arteries. However, we find the intensity of the proposed uses will have an impact on the adjacent residential uses, and that's why staff was in recommendation of denial on those two applications. The planning commission did recommend approval on all four, five items.
Okay. And I know I opened and closed the public hearing, but I do have a speaker card for Sandra Lee Love. Sandra, are you still here? I'm going to reopen that public hearing so we can get your comments on the record.
Thank you, Sandra Lee Love. I live in the Timber Creek community. I might be a day late, but I just thought I'd better come down and speak my piece. I've lived in Timber Creek since two thousand and seven, and the Anne Road and Rainbow area is very tragic. I work in Summerlin, and to get home, it'd be easy to jump on the freeway and exit Anne and come down. I don't. I take the side streets, because when you get to the corner of Anne and Rainbow, it's a right turn only for one lane and two lanes to go straight. Inevitably, somebody in the right turn lane goes straight. There's been several accidents because of that. Adding this commercial property for a car wash and the other things, I think, is not a good idea, number one. We have children that wait for a bus right there every morning and every afternoon, and there's been accidents when the bus has stopped. The other thing is, is we already have a car wash just up the street. It's a terrible herpes, I believe, and that is starting to look really shabby, because, oh, they've got five windows broken out and boarded up. It gets worse and worse. Getting into our subdivision, because we're so close to the corner, has been very hindering and exiting. Everybody in the community has to go around about to get in and out. I received this notification, the last notification. I couldn't come because I was out of town. I just feel it's a bad sort. Plus, we've got kids standing on buses there.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Love. Appreciate your input on the record. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this item? All right, I will again close public hearing.
Before, if I want to just comment one thing for Ms. Love, because she wasn't at the neighborhood meeting, and I want to share that we are very aware that that traffic condition coming east on Anne is a little bit of a problem, and development is the solution to that problem. As you know, one of your standard conditions is the traffic study, and that's what helps fix these problems. And we're very aware that is the current problem.
No, thank you, Mr. Montana. And you are keenly aware of that because of your involvement in years past, but I don't disagree with you. I think that's exactly, that is going to change, Mrs. Love, I think tremendously through that area, once you see that, should this be approved. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, when you, when you brought this to my attention several months back, or however long it was.
Longer than that.
It was longer than that. When I looked at it, I had some questions and concerns, too, but I told you, go through the process and see what happens, and I'll tell you, I have to give you credit, you had a bunch of meetings with the neighbors, and they had a lot of questions and concerns, and you, you, you made some changes based on the initial proposal because of the things that they brought up. And between meetings with the neighbors and meeting with the planning commission, you know, this worked out the way it was supposed to. You had a project, and you made the appropriate changes based on input. So I'm really happy with this. This is, you know, this is really a commercial intersection. There's commercial across the street. There's a commercial across the street to the west, so there's nothing else really to do with this, at this particular piece of property, except make it commercial. So I'm really, really happy with the way you went through, and, you know, as a former mayor, you know public input is important, so I appreciate you doing that. So we will, so is there one agenda item that we're, we're not voting on? Because I heard of the waiver thing. I'm a little confused on that.
No, everything's fine with the, conforms to all of the required conditions, and it's not an issue.
So we can vote on all the agenda items?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve agenda item eighty-four and follow planning commission's and staff's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion on item number eighty-five to follow planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval.
There is a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion has passed.
Item number eighty-six, I will make a motion to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion to approve? Please post.
Item number eighty-seven, I will make a motion to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion? And please post. Motion passes.
And item eighty-eight, I'll make a motion to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all very much, councilmembers. Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda items eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-one. Eighty-nine is ZON five nine two seven one, on a request for rezoning from CD Designed Commercial to O Office. Number ninety is SUP six one six nine eight, on a request for a special use permit for a proposed thirty-seven bed convalescent care facility nursing home at two four nine six West Charleston Boulevard. Number ninety-one is SDR five nine two seven two, on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed thirty-seven bed convalescent care facility nursing home. The act, the applicant is Positively Kids, and the owner is Swan Foundation LLC, on one point eight two acres at two four nine six West Charleston Boulevard, CD Commercial Zone, proposed O Office. Staff and planning commission recommend approval on all items. These are in Ward one, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant here?
Present. Mr. Mayor Protem and Councilman Greg Borgel, three hundred South Forest Street, here for the applicant, Positively Kids. We also have our architectural design person here and a direct representative of Positively Kids, if you have questions appropriate for their consideration. But very briefly, this item is recommended by staff, unanimously approved by the planning commission. Both the staff and the planning commission introduced amendments to the request to protect the neighbors, starting with, by the way, enhanced landscaping along the north property line.
Can we have the overhead voice? Thank you.
And the top picture is the current situation, which shows that there is a landscape buffer. However, the bottom picture is what we're going to turn it into with the planting of a continuous row of evergreen trees. So with that kind of condition and limitation on hours of visitation, we would hope that you would find it in your hearts to approve this. This is a facility for children in need of continuing care. It's in the medical district. It'll provide a facility that's not currently provided in the community. It'll save thirty-some families from having to drive to Arizona or California to see their ill children. We think it's ideal for the site. The issue that arose originally was that, under the code as it existed when we applied, we had to apply for C one zoning. There were neighbors at the first hearing saying, the majority saying that they didn't object to the project, but they did object to C one zoning because of what the project could be changed into later because of that zoning, and because the C one district is simply more liberal in design standards. At that point, staff happened to be processing an ordinance amendment, which allowed us to reclassify this as office with a special use permit through a process that took a little longer, but got us there. So what is before you today is the office application with a special use permit and a site design review with appropriate conditions that resolve the majority of neighbors' concerns. We did still have the neighbor to the north who wanted to make sure of his buffer and the other conditions, and we think we've met that as well, and we would hope that you would act on the matter as recommended by both your staff and the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Borgel. Mr. Perrigo, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mayor Protem. An office building which complied with height and Yes, Mayor Protem. An office building which complied with height and setback requirements was approved on this site in 2006 and constructed in 2008. However, the building was not -- has not been occupied, and the associated building permits have not received final approval. The applicant is proposing to locate a convalescent care facility within the existing office building, as Mr. Borgel explained, with some additional conditions that have been added on at Planning Commission. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning as well as the associated site plan review and special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Perrigo. Is anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I did receive email today from Mario, the leader of the group of the people who live around there. First of all, I want to compliment you for taking so much time and going through this so we could meet the needs of what the neighbors felt. He wanted some things in there. I think we already have them, but I want to put it on the record. So he's not in town now, but when he comes back, he can see this and see that they're on the record. The one-story height is in effect and will last, we were told by Doug Rankin, and will apply to the property even if the zoning is changed. And I just want to make sure. Can you reply to me so we have this on the record?
Mayor Protem, through you -- yes, Councilwoman, that is absolutely correct. It is an overly district. It remains intact regardless of the zoning underneath, and one-story limitation will remain.
And the city attorney would reaffirm that, right?
Mayor Protem, most certainly.
Okay. The next thing that he was wondering about, that future construction and maintenance work on the building be between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday because the current owner and developer didn't use those hours. But my understanding is we have an ordinance that's supposed to require not before 7:00 and not after 5:00. Is that correct?
Mr. Perrigo?
Yes, that is correct.
So basically, that owner would just follow what anybody else would do if they were building in there, and that you can't start before 7:00?
That is correct.
He would prefer 8:00, but I do not think if 7:00 is the time, that's why I'm asking you, if 7:00 is the time and you're nodding yes, then I don't think we should make them follow it at 8:00 if the others can do it at 7:00.
That is what the noise ordinance allows.
Okay. And then the landscaping, which we went through the last time we met, I thought we went through it very thoroughly, non-desiduous evergreen trees, and you had the taller ones, and you had the middle ones. So adding that to what they have already should make a good barrier. Now, we're doing it along the north wall. Are we doing it along the west wall, too?
No, ma'am. That hasn't been an issue.
Could we do that on the west wall, too? That's a request he had. Or can you put up that map again to let me see? Which is the?
Was it a graphic, Councilwoman, or was it an overhead?
It was an overhead.
Okay.
It was an overhead. Just to let me see where that is.
Yeah. The gentleman's prop -- oops. Perhaps I should get on the microphone. The gentleman's property is here. He really, he really has no impact from the west, and trying to double up the trees in here would be, first of all, extraordinarily expensive and also have an impact on the major parking area. So we certainly will go all the way across the north property line. So if he was concerned about being west of his property, yes, we'll go all the way over to the end of the north property line, and so he'll have a complete buffer.
And you have businesses on that side anyway, don't you?
Well, there are some residences here, but they appear to be satisfied with the existing buffer and perhaps, for all I know, didn't want needles in their swimming pool.
What, we got to needles in the swimming pool? I have that problem all the time. All right, now, so the only difference we have there is we don't have anything on the west. If the neighbors there should come, would you be willing to meet with them and see about getting that on the west? It wouldn't be that much of an area.
Absolutely. We already have trees on the west.
I know you do.
And if they have, for example, a maintenance issue, a tree has died, we need to replace a tree that's more mature, we can do that. But we wouldn't want to be caught promising to do the double row of trees which works here of mature evergreens for this distance, first of all, for cost, and secondly, because the neighbors have not expressed a desire for that.
We -- it doesn't have to be pine trees either with needles. It could be another kind of vegetation, and that's what you can do there.
And we're willing to work with neighbors in that regard. However, the gentleman that you're now concerned about specified, non-desiduous evergreen adjacent to his property, so that's what we'll do. If these people come in and need a tree replaced, or one of them's died back or hasn't thrived, we can do that.
Or if they feel that there's too much noise or too much problem, I'm just asking if you would do that.
They will.
Okay, you will do that. It's not a big length on that side before you hit the business, is it?
Well, but again, what we'll do is meet with the neighbors and see if they have that issue.
Okay, okay. I want your commitment on that, just to make sure we're all set.
Yes, we will.
And the roof being painted, treated, or modified so that it doesn't reflect sunlight directly to the residential properties immediately to the north and west, you and I have discussed that, and you've agreed to do that?
Yes. There's a material that has a matte surface that I'm told lasts for 20 years that won't reflect in the manner that apparently the existing metal roof does.
Yeah, it does. I have seen that. And he had a question here, and I'm not sure about this, and maybe planning could help me. I just got this today, or I would have gone over this earlier. Existing exterior lightings shall not be changed for what is currently in place unless they meet with the neighbors. And I don't know about that. I would think that if there's a problem, that you could come to us.
The answer is, in general, no. The existing lighting situation is fine, but within the children's outdoor area, there'd have to be like safety lights, very low level.
Yeah, wouldn't be lights, you know, wouldn't be lights that would shining into the residences close by.
Our understanding of the law and our intention is that they would be shielded so it doesn't illuminate any of the neighboring properties.
Okay, that's good. And that the applicant would not add any additional trash or waste receptacles other than the one you have, unless you check with the neighbors to see?
Yeah, that's fine. We have no need or desire for more than one trash receptacle.
Okay. And I don't understand, they wanted an enlargement of existing windows kept to a meeting. We won't worry about that. And your emergency generator that we talked about would be, is going to be located where? Can you show us?
Yes, it's located here, which is, you know, a considerable distance from any of the residences. It's all commercial to this side, so this is the logical place for it. The emergency generator, by the way, typically would run for 15 or 20 minutes once a month, and the provider has indicated to us that it would run at something like 65 decibels, which is less noise than Charleston Boulevard produces without it.
Absolutely, absolutely. On this, on this, on the generator, though, didn't you say you could move it further towards the front, which would be more away from the residences? You told me that in one of our meetings. Where is your waste receptacle right now?
It is physically possible to relocate it here. That would affect parking, including some of the parking that services the main door, not, hopefully, the handicapped accessible parking. But that would require significant changes in this area at some expense, and then it would be much more visible from Charleston. And so it seems to us that the place to put it is here, where it can be screened and kept up against the existing commercial this direction. That was our thought.
But didn't one of you tell me you could move it?
We can move it. It's a matter of cost and whether you really want an emergency generator facility up here, you know, sort of exposed to the public view.
How big is your generator facility?
How deep is it?
Big.
I better defer to someone who actually has a plan. We believe that it would be 20 feet square, and the logical place to put it is next to the trash handling facility, which the applicant, or the gentleman who's writing to you, says that's where he wants that kept. So the logical place to put it is with that. But did we tell you we could move it? Yes, we could move it up to here. It's all a matter of money.
All right. But what I'm asking is, where is your trash and waste now? I'm sorry.
Right here.
Right there. That's where your trash and waste is. Okay. So that your generator will be located between the trash and waste enclosures. Okay. That's what you've told us in previous. I'm only putting this on the record for him. He evidently isn't trusting everything unless it's on the record separately, so I'm doing this because this is a big thing in this area. This is the first time we've had something this bad, you know, going into that area like that.
Yeah. Well, the answer is, we thought it was better since the generator will be enclosed by a continuous attractive block wall and won't be offending anyone except, you know...
And it's already between the existing trash?
No, vice versa. They wanted the trash area to be screened by the generator if we're going to do this.
Oh, well, that's okay. They're near each other. They're on the same side near each other. That's the main thing.
That was our point, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So you're really meeting what he's requesting?
We think.
And now, about the visiting hours, what were the visiting hours you ended up with?
The Planning Commission recommended 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that'll be fine. We're talking about children who will be asleep after that time.
7:00 to 9:00?
Yes.
Okay. They wanted it the normal business hours, but 7:00 to 9:00 are business hours by medical. And let me see. And then there are several locations on the west wall with gaps, but we'll have to request the city to investigate that. That's a separate thing. That's not involving you. However, I would like to have on the record that as part of the condition, we do do trees located on the west property line, you know. Okay?
Yeah, well, we have trees, and we'll meet with neighbors, and if they need replacement trees, more trees, we can work with that. But we don't want to be caught into the provision along the north property line where there's more room and we can provide double trees. We don't want to automatically have identical trees. We'll talk to the neighbors and see what they need.
All right. And then you'll go on what the neighbors recommend?
That's fine. If it's otherwise legal from the city.
There's no swimming pool, so there's no need, concern about the needles.
Okay.
Okay. I, we've put this all down now. We've put it in a second way, so it's a formal record separately. And I'm doing this because we've had a long time that we've gone over this, and we still have a few neighbors there that are very concerned that this won't be followed through. And they had a concern, for example, that if you have the landscaping, that you might decide to take it out later because the lot next to it, that's what they did. They tore out some absolutely gorgeous, tall, eucalyptus trees. But if it's on your site plan, you're supposed to keep it that way. And I will explain that to them. There doesn't have to be a condition. That's already understood, that if it's a site plan, you need to keep it that way. This is something that's wonderful for the medical district, but in addition to that, this is a facility that will not, there's none other like it in the state. And as you said, why should children have to go and to Arizona or Utah families that have children? Some of the neighbors asked about the noise because you can see there was a playground in there. But that's not a playground where we're going to have children who will be able to climb and play on things. It'll be a playground where the nurse will be able to walk the child out or wheel the child out so he'll have fresh air. So I know I'm going into a lot of detail on this, but it's very important because I want the neighbors to understand that we've kept the word and we have it down the way that they asked and requested. So with all of that, then, I'm going to move to approve.
So Agenda Item 89, ZON 59271, you make a motion to approve?
Yes, I do.
There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. That motion passes. Councilwoman, Agenda Item 90?
Agenda 9, I move to approve.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 90, special use permit 61698. Please vote, and please post.
Excuse me? And Item 91, you said?
Yeah, but Councilman Barlow has to vote on 90 first.
Oh, you have to vote on 90, Ricky?
And that motion passes, and now you're on Agenda Item 91.
And on Agenda Item 91, we will have all of the conditions placed, right, that we've talked about? Did you have any other conditions you wanted to mention?
No, all of the conditions that you have discussed were pretty much intact following the Planning Commission meeting, and I think everything is covered, just as you have gone over very carefully already.
All right. So I move to approve Item Number 91 with all conditions.
There's a motion. Please vote. And please post.
And I want to thank all of you for your patience and for your concern and respect for the neighbors. This is something sort of new in that area, and just the fact that we went from CD to office, some people are misunderstanding. They think that going from CD to office made it more intense, but it doesn't. It makes it less intense, and it will be better for them. And if there's anybody watching this from that area, I'd be glad to talk to them about it. You've taken time and patience, and you've been very, very professional doing all that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and we probably shouldn't say a thank you to you and your whole staff because you've worked it for the same length of time we've worked it with the same issues we had to deal with, and we thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
And your staff as well.
Thank you. And Councilman, this is a fabulous addition to the medical district because there's not a facility like this, and you consider all of the families with young children that need this convalescent-type care. This is wonderful, so congratulations. Good for you.
And, you know, to do it and do it in a way that we're not impinging on the neighbors because we took all these conditions and did them the right way, it just comes out, I think, to a big win for people in Nevada.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Congratulations. That motion did pass. We are on Agenda Item Number 92. This is ZON 61483. This is a rezoning. This is a public hearing. The applicant is Efren Calderon, owner Thomas and Arlene Calderon, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from R1 single-family residential to R2 medium-low density residential on 0.47 acres at 804 Dyke Lane. It is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I do, I now declare open. Is the applicant present? Mr. Calderon, you want to come up front, please? Identify yourself for the record.
Efren Calderon.
Welcome to the City Council. This is a public hearing. Is anyone who wants to speak on this item? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I would like to know what are your plans for the parcel? What are your plans for the property?
What am I, what?
What are you going to do with the property, Mr. Calderon? Do you need a translator?
No, I...
Are you going to build a house? Yeah. Felipe, he's hard of hearing. If you would help us out, please?
Yes, I'm kind of...
Hold on a minute. He's our Ward 3 translator.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Calderon. Councilman Barlow?
What, I'm asking him, what are his plans for the site?
Keep it, yeah.
Are you going to build a building?
No, no, no.
No. There were a couple of homes built in 1950 without permits. The homes are built. The homes are already built?
Yes, since 1950.
Oh, so Councilman, you have homes on that parcel?
Yeah, I'm looking at it on a map right now. There are two homes on the property, but I'm wondering what is the reason for the rezoning?
Mr. Perrigo, Mr. Lowenstein, would you like to chime in on that?
Well, if the homes have been there since 1950, what is the purpose for rezoning? There's no need to rezone. They would be grandfathered.
Sure, Mayor Protem. Councilman, I don't know what his motivation is, but the request for the rezone is in conformance with the master plan that is on that site. So it would bring the two into conformance, but I don't know what his motivation is to rezone.
Right, I get that. Or he can remain as is if there's no plans.
That is correct.
Right. So I'm just wondering if, in fact, he had any plans or what prompted him to come here for the rezoning? There's no need to rezone if there's no plan.
No, it's about the way.
Ask him what prompted him to come and get this rezoned. For what purpose?
The property is going to remain the same.
The reason is, I guess, how do we arrive to this? I don't recall how we arrived to this situation. Oh, I remember. The two homes are 25 feet, the backyards are 25 feet away one from another.
Yes.
The backyards.
Yes.
And the city require 15 or 30 feet away, one house, one from each house, away from backyards.
Mr. Lowenstein, can you jump in? What, what?
And that's when we...
Hold on one sec, hold on one second. As far as the application is concerned, what's on the application? What prompted Mr. Calderon to come through the door and do this rezoning? Is there code enforcement issues? Is there any setbacks, issues? I mean, because if this, these homes are built according to him in the, in the 50s, then there wouldn't be any reason that I can see that code enforcement would go and have him update his property. Because if that's the case, they would have to go through the entire neighborhood and do the same thing. So help me understand, why is this here?
Way through you, Mayor Protem. This subject site actually came in with some variance requests previously, because I believe there was a desire to split the parcel into two. There is no impetus based on any city action for the applicant to come before the city to rezone the property. This is applicant-initiated. Their justification doesn't, justification letter doesn't say anything other than they want to rezone the property. By doing so, when it becomes an R2 property, they could basically do a parcel map, and probably can, the homes would then conform to the setback requirements, which they currently can in an R1 zoning district if they were split into two, to sell off one or the other. So that is our assumption, which he can clarify if that's actually the case in which they want to, the reason behind their rezoning.
So we couldn't do a parcel map with, on an R1 property? We can only do it on a, on a medium-low density?
We could do a parcel map, but they would have to then apply for the associated variances for the structures. Even though they're existing, their current configuration, either non-permitted or whatever, but when you're splitting the, creating another parcel line, I guess, basically as a result of the code, they would have additional setback variances.
Okay, not, not, not a problem. This area, this area does fall into compliance with the medium-low, and so I'm, that's not an issue. I was just wondering what, why? I mean, these homes have been here forever, and, unless he has some information in regards to why he, he wants it, I mean, I...
Early on, Felipe Ortiz, for the record. The applicant had applied with the planning commission. He recognized that there, these are houses built in the 1950s. He would like to separate them and get a parcel map so that they're individually. That's what brought him forward to city council today.
Move for approval.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon. There's a motion to approve.
Thank you, Felipe. Finally, someone can explain to me and articulate. I'm kidding.
There's a motion to approve Agenda number 92. Councilman Beers, voice vote. Thank you, city clerk. Please post that motion. Councilman? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Calderon.
Muchisimo gracias.
All right, moving on to Agenda item number 93. This is ZON7, I'm sorry, ZON61791. It is a rezoning. This is a public hearing. Applicant precedent properties LLC owner is RMH Trust for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R1 single-family residential on 1.89 acres at the northwest corner of Durrell and Decatur Boulevard. It is in Ward 6. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I do now declare open. Is the applicant present? Please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Levi Parker, representative of the applicant and owner here in the rezoning application.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And, Mr. Parker, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I'm going to move to, to approve based on planning commission staff's recommendation for approval. That's the motion. Please vote and please post. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
You bet.
Hey, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Is this the property across from Challenger? Challenger School?
Mr. Parker, you got your, do you have a map?
No, I don't, not that I'm aware of. It's across the street from the DMV.
Oh, that's the DMV?
Yeah, the DMV.
Okay, got you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, moving on to Agenda item 94. This is ZON61842. It is a rezoning. This is a public hearing. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for, City of Las Vegas, for possible action or request for a rezoning from R1 single-family residential to C2 general commercial on 1.06 acres at the southeast corner of Washington Avenue and Veterans Memorial Drive. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow's ward. The planning commission and staff have recommended approval. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. And, Mr. Parago, yes?
We have these two items, sir, 94 and 95? No?
Councilman?
Okay.
You want to?
Excuse me, I, I should have made, because that's what we talked about in our CMO briefing, but maybe it didn't go through as a bid.
Oh, okay, no, 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 we'll, we'll hear it. We'll hear.
Yeah, these are up for hearing, unless you...
Okay.
And, it's, it's, I'll let the Councilman Barlow.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to be heard on this can come forward at this time. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Okay. On 94?
94.
We'll move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda item 94. I did read it. Yeah, I read it. Want me to rewind? Please post?
Yeah, I have a, I have the same.
That motion is approved?
Ma'am.
Are you ready to hear 95, Councilman?
Please.
Okay. This is Agenda item 95, ZON61843. It is a rezoning. It is a public hearing. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from R1 single-family residential to C2 general commercial on 2.61 acres at 925 North Las Vegas Boulevard. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. The planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. And, Mr. Parago, I'm making you the applicant. Are you here?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. This action would bring the site zoning into conformance of the general plan, and we respectfully ask for approval from the applicant.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval.
There's a motion for approval. Please post, and that motion passes. All right, moving on to Agenda items 96 and 97. This is, 96 is VAR61644, on a request for variance to allow a residential adjacency setback of 172 feet, where a minimum of 240 feet is required. Agenda item 97 is SUP61648, on a request for special use permit to install a new 80-foot tall wireless communication facility, stealth design, meaning a concealment screen use. The applicant is Verizon Wireless, and the owner is Alta Decatur Shopping Center LLC on 1.42 acres, located on the northeast corner of Alta Drive and Decatur Boulevard. It is C2 general commercial zone. Staff recommends denial, and the planning commission recommends approval on both items. These are in Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm Tracy Klein with Spectrum Services, 8905 West Post Road, here for the applicant, sir.
Good afternoon. Good to see you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on these items? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
We've been working on this stealth design with members of my staff, and I will approve this, but I want to make sure I approve it, that we have had the final approval on the design. Is that okay with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that all, am I doing that legally? In other words, we know what is supposed to be on the design, but we, I haven't seen the final one, as long as it's what we thought it would be.
There it is, Councilman, right there on the screen.
Oh, okay. That's beautiful. It watches the one in the Springs Preserve. That's fine. I move to approve.
All right. Agenda item 96, there's a motion to approve. Please post. That motion has, has passed. And Agenda item 97, Councilman?
Move to approve.
Move to approve Agenda item 97 as well. Please vote and post. That motion passes as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll move on to Agenda items 98, 99, and 100. 98 is VAR61859, on a request for variance to allow no off-site improvements where complete street standards require a five-foot wide sidewalk, a five-foot wide amenity zone, and other amenities for a 60-foot wide minor collector's street on 10 acres on the west side of Ula Street North and south of Azure Drive. Agenda item 99 is WVR61857, on a request for a waiver to allow no streetlights where such are required on 10 acres on the west side of Ula Street North and south of Azure Drive. Agenda item 100 is WVR61858, on a request for a waiver to allow a gated 37-foot wide private residential street with no sidewalk or amenity zone, where a gated 47-foot wide residential street with a three-foot wide amenity zone and sidewalk and other amenities are required on five acres on the southwest corner of Azure Drive and Ula Street. The applicant owner is DR Horton Incorporated. It is RE Residence Estates Zone. Staff recommends denial, and planning commission recommends approval on all these, on all items. These are in Ward 6, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. And is the applicant present?
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the council. Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing DR Horton in this matter.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on these items? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. This has been a tough one for you, Mr. Gronauer. I will move to approve Agenda item 98, follow planning commission's recommendation. Please vote and please post. Councilman, who hasn't voted?
Have you two voted?
Councilman Barlow. It's okay. That motion passes, and on Agenda item 99, I will follow planning commission's recommendation for approval as well.
Mr. Ross, could I just ask a question?
Please, Councilman.
I understand to keep the sort of rural atmosphere while you wouldn't have the sidewalks. I'm just wondering, is it going to be safe with no lights? Because even in gated areas, you know, there are problems. You might, you don't want any lights?
The lights are on the houses themselves. They will be on the outside of the, of the homes. The neighbors out here do not want any streetlights to be in the subdivisions or out on the public streets. That's how the rural neighborhood preservation area is out here in Clark, well, Clark County in the city of Las Vegas, and that is a specific condition that we agreed to in Clark County in order to move forward in the process itself. So this has been an issue, as Councilwoman Ross has mentioned, has been vetted out. I've been on this project for about two years in dealing with these issues. Now I'm bringing them over to the city.
Okay.
Can that answer your question, Councilman?
It does. I, you know, I have areas in my ward. They don't want the sidewalks. They want the grass. However, they do want lights, so that's what I, I wondered.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Gronauer. Please post the vote. That motion passes. On Agenda item 100, WVR61858, I would move to follow planning commission's recommendation for approval, and I will note why staff has denied all of these. We do not have rural standards in our, on our books, and so that's why this applicant would have to go that direction. I will say this. DR Horton has done a fabulous job with a lot of these infill pieces with their products. They're beautiful homes. They're fabulous homes, and they sell rather well. So thank you, Mr. Gronauer.
Public comment.
Oh, you want to say something? Councilman?
Public comment. Did you open public comment?
Oh, yeah. I close the public hearing.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to add that in the area I have that has gone from rural to urban, because we don't have anything on the books, you'll see places where you have no sidewalks, then you have sidewalks, then you don't have it, and, and then when you make people put sidewalks in, they sort of resent it. So it's good that you're just doing this right from the beginning.
Thank you. Please vote and post. Councilman Turkey? And that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gronauer.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Have a great day. We are on Agenda items 101 and 101, 102. 101 is VAR62029, on a request for a variance to allow 33 parking spaces, where 35 parking spaces are required for a proposed 10,248-square-foot museum, art display, or art sales private. Agenda item 102 is SUP61802, on a request for special use permit for a proposed 10,248-square-foot museum, art display, or art sales private. The applicant is Hellfire Media LLC, and the owner is the State Bar of Nevada on 0.78 acres at 600 East Charleston Boulevard. PR, professional office, and parking zone. Staff recommends denial, and the planning commission recommends approval on both items. These are in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Hi, Laura Dreya, 520 South 4th Street. I'm here with Jeff McElhart, who is representing Zach Bagans, the applicant. Zach Bagans is the host of a TV show on Travel Channel called Ghost Adventures. In the course of his career, Zach has traveled the world collecting artifacts from episodes of his show. After 11 seasons, Zach doesn't want to travel overseas so often, so he's basing himself in Las Vegas, where his family has lived for more than 20 years. He chose this building because of its historical and intrinsic value to the community. It's very old, and the Nevada State Bar just vacated their office. We believe this is an adaptive use of a historical property and one that is less intensive than the previous office use. Planning commission approved the two parking space variance as it was caused by a 360-square-foot basement that was factored in. The basement is only six feet deep and therefore not suitable to be occupied by the public. Nonetheless, I am submitting a letter signed by the neighboring property addressing overflow parking if necessary. I'm also submitting a letter of support signed by the vice president of the John S. Park Neighborhood Association. In it, Mr. Ganson states that the applicant has been sensitive to addressing the community's needs. To address these needs, we accept a revised condition that will be read by Mr. Lowenstein. Also, we request an annual review to be heard by this council, so as not to burden the planning commission. This means changing the condition three to read, "This special use permit shall be reviewed one year from the date of issuance of a business license by city council. The applicant shall be responsible for notification and the cost of, of the review. Failure to pay the city for these costs may result in the revocation of the use permit." That concludes my presentation. Jeff's here to answer any questions about the business itself, and I believe the president of the John S. Park Neighborhood Association is here to speak as well.
Okay, thank you very much for that. You was clean and concise. I understand a lot of that neighborhood's haunted in some way. They ghost down on the end, down there. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to be here, be heard on this? Please come forward and state your name for the record. You too.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and members of the council. David Figler, John S. Park Neighborhood President, 1302 South 6th Street. The applicant came to our quarterly Neighborhood Association meeting and made a presentation and addressed some concerns, and then, as my understanding is that they held a required neighborhood meeting of their own accord the following evening, and I know a lot of neighbors participated. What I just wanted to do is sort of give a sense of where the neighborhood is with this. Councilman Coffin, as a neighbor, was at our neighborhood meeting as well, and I know he knows some of this, but I just want to articulate for the rest of the council. The, the primary concern of the neighborhood is, of course, the, the traffic impact, and certainly the issues from the neighborhood paralleled and tracked the issues that staff put forward in the initial denial with regard to the intensity of the project and the potential impact. There was a lot of discourse in the original presentation about shuttle buses, and that was of particular concern to the neighbors. As you may or may not know, the entire historic John S. Park neighborhood, from Park Paseo over Det, down through all the side streets, whether it be Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, et cetera, has a ban on limos, tour buses, and presumably shuttle buses as well, from utilizing the short cuttery of our part of the neighborhood. 6th Street does provide the only actual arterial all the way from Charleston to Sahara that was being abused. Traffic engineering and city responded, Councilman Coffin responded, and we have a ban, an absolute ban, where people are being either warned or cited to not have those type of vehicles through the neighborhood. So one concern was that as, hopefully, this totally appropriate commercial use of the old haunted State Bar building for a potential tourist attraction would grow in its popularity, so too would the potential traffic input, impact on the neighborhood. The primary concern was that the shuttle buses would be cutting through, or that there would be an attempt to change that ban in the neighborhood, which we do not want, that there would be staging on 6th or a congestion on 6th for people, because that is also one of the main ways that residents get out to utilize Charleston, is to use 6th Street. The applicant came to our neighborhood meeting, and presumably also at their neighborhood meeting that they sponsored, to address these issues. They seem extraordinarily sincere. They seem very amenable to being a good neighbor, and they have a project that a lot of neighbors are very excited about and hopeful that they could utilize that now vacant building into something very vibrant, not just for the community, but for the neighborhood as well, and that they'd be good neighbors. But there are those concerns, and our hope that whatever conditions are placed on there would ensure that the intensity of the potential use of this property not negatively impact the neighborhood, especially as it relates to traffic and people. the neighborhood, especially as it relates to traffic and people. They have a decent security plan in place, as it was articulated to us, which is going to definitely be a benefit for the neighborhood. They seem very, as I said, sincere and good folks. We just want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Getting rid of the shuttle buses certainly would be one thing. I don't know if they intend to ultimately use shuttle buses independently or use an outside source, but anyone who is going to be using vehicles as a destination, with the property as the destination in mind, can't use that part of the neighborhood, and we don't want to have any additional building on that. So, that's the primary concern of the neighbors, and so any conditions that would be appropriate, and I think that the applicant is amenable to that, would be great for the neighborhood.
And I think that's what the twelve-year, twelve-month review is, that you read into the record as well, will give you that, give the neighborhood that kind of security, if you will. And I know Councilman Coffin, I mean, if there are issues going on in the third month, he's going to bring this to the attention of you, your clients, so be mindful of that. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Go ahead, state your name for the record.
My name is Jeffrey Ju. I own and reside in the house at seven-hundred-twenty Park Paseo. I was unfortunately out of town for both of the meetings that this gentleman just mentioned, so I haven't gotten a whole lot of input aside from what's available online. My main concern is traffic, just because, I guess, what may not have been mentioned is that the parking lot for the structure is split between the front and back. So, should people try to find parking in the front of the building and fail, then they would proceed down Charleston and then turn down Park Paseo, and I'm afraid of people just running laps around the block, just because, as you did mention, it is a historic neighborhood, and I bought a house there and am currently renovating it because I feel it is a nice, quiet neighborhood, and because, because of its historic designation, we don't have changes in zoning that would result in changing traffic patterns.
Well, you're very fortunate, because Councilman Coffin lives in your neighborhood. But I thought his house was on the big bus tour route, because he's so popular over there in that area. But, thank you very much for your comments. I think it might be a good idea, depending on how Councilman does with this item, to sit down with these folks and understand exactly what it is, since you're going to be neighbors, right?
Okay.
Probably a good idea. Thanks for coming down. All right, this is still a public hearing. Anyone else being wished to hear on this item? I will close the public comment then, and Councilman Coffin.
Mayor Protem, if I can quickly...
Pardon me, Councilman Verge. I have got a question for the applicant. People, you think really find a building full of ghosts scarier than a building full of lawyers? That's a good question. Which building would you rather be in? Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you. We are rid of the lawyers, and that, however, they used to keep the rat population down now, so we have to have new occupants. I'm just kidding. As certainly Mr. Figler knows, as my neighbor and as a lawyer, I can count on him anytime I need representation. So, there really are no objections from the neighborhood. The conditions applied such that there is left turn prohib, not necessarily prohibition, but it just, I believe we're talking about a distraction, a impediment to left turns out of that property onto Sixth. When we first met on this several months ago, it was no traffic on Sixth and no parking on Sixth, certainly no event parking. I mean, occasional parking of a few vehicles is okay, nobody's going to object to that. But I think it's important that that's how the attorneys did business, that's how Frank Schreck's law firm did business for many years before that. So, I think if we just leave the neighborhood alone, they don't want to bother you, and you don't want to bother them. I don't see any objections except for, to keep you in the straight and narrow, Laura. I think your client should be on a leash of some kind, let's say a year, for a comeback to us. I think we should have a condition attached to for a year of the use, so that we see how. What would staff recommend as the best way to phrase that? Because I want to make sure that we have a comeback on you guys.
Through you, Mayor Protem. The applicant indicated a condition for a required review and one year before city council. I have the language verbatim that I can read into the record, as well as the amendment to one of the other conditions when a motion is made on the special use permit.
State that other amendment now, and then I'll be incorporating that in the motion.
Sure. The additional language to be added to condition number one of SUP six-one-eight-zero-two would be appropriate signage and/or onsite pavement markings meeting the approval of the city traffic engineer shall be incorporated into the parking lot design and constructed prior to public occupancy of this use.
All right, well, all right. As the applicant, do you agree to these conditions?
We do. Yes.
All right, then. Mayor Protem, is that all?
The added condition for the, it was actually an amended condition of condition number three would then read, "This special use permit shall be reviewed one year from the date of issuance of a business license by the city council. The applicant shall be responsible for notification costs of the review. Failure to pay the city of these costs may result in the revocation of the special use permit."
We agree to that.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor Protem, let's speak this up then.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Councilman Coffin, I think Mr. Lewis wants to chime in.
Oh, sure.
If you don't mind, Councilman, Mayor Protem, if I may. I just want to be clear on the change to three. I think the original said, "The special use permit shall be reviewed one year from the date of issuance of a business license," at which time the Planning Commission may revoke the special use permit. We've changed that to city council, is that right, planning? One thing I wanted to say is that just because we've removed the words revoke the special use permit, doesn't mean the city council can't take any action that seems appropriate at that time.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Councilman, you ready to make a motion?
Thank you. I move for approval of this item number one-oh-one with the conditions as stated by our Planning Commission staff and with the clarification from our legal counsel about the, you know, the additional problems should there be a violation.
Very well. Motion's been made to approve of gen item one-zero-one. Please vote and post. And that motion passes. On agenda item one-zero-two, Councilman?
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve.
Same conditions.
Mayor Protem, same, thank you.
Post.
Be a good neighbor.
Thank you.
And that motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Figler. Always nice to see you as well, so thanks for coming down. We are on agenda item one-zero-three. This is SUP six-one-zero-nine-seven, special use permit. It is a public hearing. Applicant is Todd Kessler, owner, one-hundred-tenth Street LLC. For possible action on an appeal of the approval by the Planning Commission on a request for special use permit for a proposed three-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-eight square foot tavern limited establishment with three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet of outdoor seating area at nine-two-seven Fremont Street. This is C-two general commercial zone. It is Councilman Coffin's Ward Three. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant present? Mr.
Kessler?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Todd Kessler, two-sixty-one Las Vegas Boulevard North. With me today, I have Lance Johns, who is the owner proprietor of Atomic Kitchen-to-be, as well as Atomic Liquor. I'm going to let him speak first, and then I'm going to come in afterwards and talk about a few things.
Okay. Mr. Johns?
Lance Johns, nine-seventeen Fremont. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. We're very excited now, after two and a half years of opening, reopening Atomic Liquors, we're very excited now to be able to bring this project so we can have a food down there that we've been lacking for so much, for so long. When we first opened two and a half years ago, there was not one open business within an entire block of us. And now we're happy to see that we've got eleven street records, we've got Chow, we've got other businesses now coming in. I can't tell you how different that part of the street is today than when we opened two and a half years ago. So, we're very excited to be bringing this project online.
Very good. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to be heard on this item? Mr. Figler?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. David Figler, thirteen-oh-two South Sixth Street. Be careful, not giving me a compliment, liking to see me, I'm going to abuse it. I'm coming not as neighborhood president or representative of this fine business, but as a patron of Atomic and certainly a longtime watcher of the downtown area and specifically Fremont East and Fremont East East. I just wanted to make my comment on behalf of a lot of patrons who really appreciate what they've done with this historic building and the business that they've put inside it. They're an extraordinarily thoughtful neighbor. They do great programming in there above and beyond the obvious, but the obvious they do better than most in presenting a really great program for what their intent it is, and certainly I have no doubt that they're going to do the same with their food project as well. Fremont East East is a unique space. It is a newly vibrant space again. I remember when it was, and I remember when it wasn't, and now I'm glad that it is again, because this is where we, the business owners downtown and the residents downtown, certainly patronize as much as we can, and it sometimes gets a little loud, it sometimes gets a little raucous, but always in a thoughtful way. They are considerate people, they are good owners. We all walked in there skeptical in the beginning, but they won us over quickly, and it's my personal endorsement that they should be approved for what they're asking for today.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, sir. Please.
Good afternoon, Councilman Russ Allen Lichtenstein, thirty-three-fifteen Russell Road. The appeal that you mentioned was by Reverend Smith and representing various neighbors. These people who've been living in the neighborhood, congratulations, Atomic Cafe, not against progress, not against development, very much in favor of that. But if you look at this particular project, when I started looking at just the justification letter, it's my understanding that Mr. Johns is not planning outdoor music venues. I don't know if that's true or not. It's not, certainly not mentioned or clear in the justification letter. The special use permit, without some kind of limitation, would allow Mr. Johns or any subsequent owner pretty much carte blanche in terms of the tavern license to do outdoor events without the limits on decibel levels. That seems to be, and certainly shouldn't be, the default position for any new kind of business is looking for a special use permit. There has to be a balance between even, Mr. Figler noticed the loudness that sometimes occurs, between loudness and times and decibel levels and quiet enjoyment of people. So, what we are urging, particularly since Mr. Johns appears not to be planning an outdoor music venue anyway, is to put the limitation there that it would adhere to, I believe it's section nine-point-one-six-oh-three-oh, and not have one more sort of loud bar or restaurant within the neighborhood, and if there is a desire to at some time in the future, create that, then come back to the council and say, "This is what we want to do." As an alternative, would not, I would suggest perhaps putting this on hold for thirty days, and maybe things can be worked out in a way that would be satisfactory to all. But it really can't legitimately be a situation where that the default is, we get rid of the decibel level for the, for the rest of the city, for just these people, because it's not just an entertainment district, it's a residential district also.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Sir, please come on up and state your name for the record.
Hi, Doug DeMacy, two-oh-eight North Ninth. I just, I'd like to ask that the item be invaded for thirty more days. We did, you know, as a group, we paid to have this hearing today, but we didn't actually, never got to meet with the applicant. Mr. Johns was nice enough to show up, Mr. Kessler was not there. That's been the same in the past. We've held other meetings. So, that's all I'd ask today, is that you put it off for thirty days. And then I'd also like to submit this to the clerk. This is, you know, a written restriction that Alan did on the Ferguson, that's on the Ferguson, the clerk already has that one, and that's just, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to be heard? It is a public hearing, which is open. I'm going to close the public hearing now and defer to Councilman Coffin.
Thank you. The subject of noise, thank you, Mayor Protem, to planning, the subject of noise has come up. What's the existing rule or regulation on Fremont Street that this, this business will fall under?
Through you, Mayor Protem. The subject site is outside of the entertainment overlay district, so is subject to the noise ordinance of, you know, the municipal chapter nine.
So, if noise becomes a nuisance, it is a code violation?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have to say, is additional comment. I don't know whether anybody else is, but that clarifies the noise issue for me.
Okay. Councilman Tarkanian?
It's not my ward. I'm not down there that often, but I do know we get a lot of complaints of noise there. And I also know that it's very difficult to be able to pin down the noise. Who walks around with the meter, you know, audiologically to see how loud it is? I would just say, the comments that were made about being cautious, I think are accurate. I think, you know, that's just my thought, because we've had so many people who have been upset in that area from noise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, you want to make a motion?
I move for approval of item one-oh-three, subject to the conditions that's imposed by planning and the, and the Planning Commission, and with the addendum that it's Fremont Street. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve of gen item one-zero-three, and should this pass, I would recommend, Mr. Kessler, that you, Mr. Johns, reach out to your neighbors and...
We have. They met before this agenda.
Okay. That motion passes? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on one-oh-four. It's okay. We're on gen item one-oh-one-zero-four. This is ROC six-two-five-five-zero, review of condition. It is a public hearing. Applicant is Nasir Kosa, owner, Value LLC. For possible action on a request for review of condition of an approved special use permit, U-dash-zero-zero-two-two-dash-nine-eight, to delete condition number one, which states, "The sale of beer shall be limited to twelve-ounce cans only. The sale of singles of bottles, the sale of singles of bottles shall be prohibited." At one-five-one-zero East Sahara Avenue, this is C-one Limited Commercial and Council and Coffin's Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and members of the council. Jim DiFiore here on behalf of Mr. Nasir Kosa, who is to my left, and we're here to hear the item.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you. Is it a serious inconvenience that, to your client, Jim, that, that they cannot sell glass bottles singly?
I'm sorry?
What is the reason that they can't live with the cans? I mean, the cans only. They're allowed to sell singles, which in many cases, they're not... Are you, are you proposing to get rid of all the restriction on all singles?
Yes. At this time, we'd like to have condition one lifted, but we're amenable to any conditions that you impose upon anything going forward in the future.
I'll tell you, because of the neighborhood, the, and Basil and Nasir have been good neighbors, but still, we have a clean neighborhood there, and there's a reason for it, probably because it's just no glass, and, you know, no singles, and there are bums that hang out not far from there, and we don't want them to become accustomed to buying anything in singles there. However, I could see where cans are okay, because the detritus that they leave is not so bad. So, I mean, it's like recyclable. So, let's say that we just allow singles in cans only.
Okay. Would that be limited to twelve-ounce, or...
No, I think that the, many common sizes now are larger than twelve-ounce. In nineteen-ninety-eight, that language really did apply, but it certainly doesn't apply today.
Okay. Are you okay with that, singles in cans only?
No, because most of the business now with all these craft beer and kinda glasses, twenty-two ounces.
Mr. Kosa, would you go ahead and give your name for the record?
Yes. My name is Nasir Kosa, owner of Value Market, fifteen-ten East Sahara.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you, Mr. Difory, do you wish to side, do a sidebar with your client to discuss this?
Yes, just for a minute.
Okay, please.
What is it that you said in your motion, since we have a little time here?
Just gonna have, gonna allow them to have singles, metallic containers only.
And Mayor Protem?
Go ahead, please.
I can, I can agree with it. I'm gonna go ahead and go along with Councilman Coffin's recommendation of the new condition.
Okay.
All right, Your Honor, I now move for approval of this, subject to the condition that containers, single containers will be allowed metallic wrapping only, metallic containers only.
Okay.
I did not put a limit on the size.
Mr. Difory, did you wish to respond?
I was just conferring with my client that the microbrewery's only selling glass bottles, and it's gonna be a difficult thing for him to be able to limit it to just cans only. Is there a possibility that we could have a review?
A review in one year?
Pardon me?
A review in one year.
Yes, if we could, if we could have the glass bottles and...
We'll review it in one year, what we've just, what I've just moved.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve, single cans only, with a review, administrative review or council review, Councilman?
I think administrative review, looking at the record.
Administrative review on agenda item 104. Mr. Perrigo?
Mayor Protem, could we let Mr. Lowenstein just clarify that, just make sure we get the condition right? Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem, through you. The existing condition would be modified to read as "The sales of beer shall be limited to cans only." The next sentence in that condition would still apply, "The sales of singles or bottles shall be prohibited." Then an additional condition for a required review, an administrative required review in one year from the date of this approval.
That's it. That is correct.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think, Mr. Kosa, just so you understand Councilman Coffin's concern, you know, that neighborhood is fairly, is fairly clean of glass debris, and I think that's probably why that condition was put on there in 1998. I think that's a big concern. So you, as an operator, you know, can monitor that and maintain that, and should in a year you be able to sell bottles, you'll still want to do that for the neighborhood's benefit. Councilman Pierce, did you want to chime in?
Could I have staff read us that second condition again? Mr. Lowenstein, please?
An administrative required review shall be conducted in one year from the date of this approval?
That was the third one.
The amended condition from the one actually has two sentences as part of it. "The sales of beer shall be limited to cans only. The sales of singles or bottles shall be prohibited."
The sale of singles? Does that preclude single cans?
Bottles and six-packs can be sold.
Councilman Coffin, does your intent for them not to be able to sell?
I think it's pretty obvious that bottles in quantity can be sold.
Right.
That in a case of beverage, a six-pack of beverage in bottles can be sold. It's obvious for taken away. Can it be more obvious that a single bottle is for consumption in the parking lot?
That would be revised, "The sales of single bottles shall be prohibited."
So just single bottles, but if Mr. Kosa wants to sell a six-pack or a 12-pack of bottles, he will be allowed to do so?
Correct.
Okay. How about single cans? Are single cans prohibited by, by us, Mr. Kosa? Councilman, is that your intent as well? He wants to be able to sell single cans. So I think that, would you read that again, Mr. Lowenstein?
Okay, one more time. "The sales of beer shall be limited to cans only," is how we're revising. "The sales of, of single bottles shall be prohibited."
Yeah. Councilman, Councilman Anthony?
Okay, I'm, I'm a little confused, because if, if you can sell a six-pack of bottled beer, then we walk outside and you're holding a single bottle of beer that's in glass. So what's the difference with, between buying a single bottle of glass beer and a 12-pack when you can walk outside and you're holding one glass or the other? What's the difference?
You want to ask me? Is that it?
Well, I'm just asking.
Since I made the motion, and I would like to provide you the answer.
Please, Councilman Coffin and Lichtenstein.
The answer, which is kind of self-evident in wards three and one, three and five, is that too many people are bumming for money. They get the one bottle, they drink it, they break it. Sometimes they can't control their hands, it breaks. Sometimes they just want it to hit somebody with. It's all that that goes on in the chemistry of this older neighborhoods. And you're right on Sahara there. So we don't want somebody to buy a single bottle of something and drive off into Sahara. A six-pack or a case implies we, I think we don't have to hold people's hands. It implies off-premise consumption, certainly.
Okay, so...
Without a guarantee.
So help us simplify this. You want to allow Mr. Kosa to only sell single cans?
When he sells a single, that it only be in a metallic container.
Okay. And allow him to sell bottles in multi-pack?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lowenstein?
That was always the intent.
Your turn.
As it was phrased.
Well, let's scratch all the other language and start with, "The sales of single beer shall be limited to cans only."
Yeah.
I'm really, Mayor Protem?
Oh, please.
I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry, because what I heard, what I heard the councilmen say was, I heard him say metallic bottle. And, okay, no, I didn't. Okay, very good, I'll be quiet.
Have you been drinking beer down there? Okay, Mr. Lowenstein, one more time for the motion, and then we'll vote, or actually post. Go ahead.
"The sales of single beer shall be limited to cans only."
Mr. Kosa, good for you?
And one year review of...
One year review, administratively, and please post the vote. No, first, motion's made, let's vote. Thank you, motion passes. Good to see you, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. We are on agenda item 105. Please set the date on any appeals filed or required by, by public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings and nuisance litter abatements. This is now citizens' participation. Citizen participation is public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction, within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to three minutes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Dorothy Barnes, for the record, 171 West Van Wagenen Street, 11D Henderson, Nevada, 89015. I was hoping Mayor Goodman would be here. It's good to see y'all. Happy New Year to everybody. I wish you much success and prosperity. It's good to be here, see everybody's looking good. And I just wanted to come down and I've been trying to work with the Henderson Police to get some control over the narcotics epidemic up there. I live in Espinoza Senior Citizen Complex, and I thought it's gonna be smooth sailing all the way. I moved in there last March, and it's been hell and high water, all the way with these seniors. They're doing drugs, they're doing all kinds of crazy stuff that teenagers usually do when they're not responsible. And it's bad when you deal with old folks acting up. I'll be 59 in June. I'm trying to say in the right order. That chief of police was at the city council meeting last night, like, what am I gonna do? I said, well, I volunteer to work with the law enforcement and patrol my area, 'cause I really don't want to see drugs. We're right next door to a school. Kids pass here on a day-to-day basis. We should be setting the example. We should be the shining stars of the neighborhood. But I did work on it, but it's good to see y'all. I'm hoping to be confirmed by Easter. I've been training to become Catholic at the St. Thomas More parish. Bishop Pepe will be holding the confirmation service at the Guardian Angel Cathedral. I think Easter Day or the holy Saturday before Easter, I'll find out. I'll let you all know. You all welcome to come and witness my confirmation into the Catholic faith. You know, Pope Francis has declared it, you're of mercy. Who needs mercy? I need mercy. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. We all need mercy. Anyone else? Mr. Snell, I'm gonna let you be seen, I'm gonna let you be seen with your wig on, but please address us without it.
Okay, ET Snell, clown community activist, etsnell.com. I'm here today to garner some support, but first off, I want to say the gifted philosopher and physicist...
Thank you, that's better.
Well, you know, that's a, you're kind of a control Nazi, man. I don't really like that, dude. You know, come on, you know, I know you've got hair issues, dude, but that ain't right. And don't say, stop my time. This guy wants to go there, we can go there. This ain't my first rodeo, cowboy. You know, I've got issues with this. But anyway, I want to talk about the gifted philosopher Albert Einstein that left us many gifts. Among the gifts Albert Einstein left us was the definition of insanity, doing the same things over and over again, expecting different results. In short, you can't fix stupid. And that's what it's all about. You know, I've got two issues with the council, dropping the age, as you know, total nude from 21 to 18. And the other issue is the road, the highway from hell. That's that two-lane highway coming from Barstow to Las Vegas. My belief in it always have been, I've spoken to this esteemed body of council members since the, God, what, 10, 15 years, when I addressed Mr. Goodman, I believe that the San Manuel casino influence has stopped any progress of that two-lane. That's a death trap. Bob Smith in Yarmouth, he shut down the fire department, he turned it into a recruit, so the people can't respond, so the fire department can't respond. So we've got a recall on Bob Smith. We filed it December 2nd. Still 45 days, we're waiting for 500 signatures. The other thing that we've done, can you people imagine this? I'm asking you to pay attention to this. Can you imagine toll roads in the inland empire on the way coming to Las Vegas? Can you imagine toll roads, what that's gonna do to your guys' casinos and the traffic to Vegas? That's gonna kill you. And another thing that's gonna kill you is 16,000 homes they're trying to propose in Asperia. That's gonna kill that whole road on the way to Vegas from San Bernardino up here, and that's the pliable road to get here. I'm telling you, people, you need to wake up. You need to wake up to what they're doing. I've taken on Bob Smith, he's done. I've also filed recalls on all of the city council members with great support in that city, against the whole entire city council on Saturday. That is insane, the tapestry is putting in 17,000 homes. I have come here today to ask your people's support for to stop the tapestry project. 17,000 homes putting on that highway is gonna kill you guys. Toll roads are gonna kill you guys. You guys are asleep at the switch, and I'm telling you what, you gotta wake up. I'm asking you to come support our recall of the entire Asperia City Council member to get rid of that tapestry project. They've got them all in their project. It's absolutely insane what they're doing. Thank you, God bless. And if anybody wants to respond, it's etsnell@ymail.com. I'm looking for you guys' support. You're gonna be killing that traffic on the way up to Vegas. Thank you, and have a beautiful day. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Estella Mohammed King, and I am a Lyft driver. I'm not necessarily here in, to represent Lyft. I'm here just to share my story just briefly. Thank you for your time, first of all. Earlier, when I was here today, one of the concerns that was mentioned was a safety concern, considering as, as it pertains to who's driving our city residents around. Sorry, I'm very, very nervous.
Relax, you're doing fine.
Okay.
And we're glad you're here.
I'm the wife of a veteran, a disabled veteran, I just want to throw that out. Disabled combat veteran, to be specific.
Okay, thank you.
In town, my day job, because as we know, a lot of people use Lyft to, to supplement their income. I'm a security guard in town. I also have an alcohol awareness card, food handler safety card, because in my car, I hand out snacks and water to be comfortable for the people that I ride. My sheriff's card to go with. And I volunteer at the USO in my spare time. Most of these all require some form of background check, and two of them that I know, and I have TSA pre-check, thanks to my husband. Those also require fingerprint background checks. I do have the state's business license, I do have the county's business license, and when it comes time, I'll get the city business license, too. My only, and it's not even a concern, it's not even opposition, I would have liked that it be made a requirement of employment through Lyft and Uber, that people get the business license, so they could have opted to do the, you know, they would have got that ahead of time. We're kind of in a situation where I specifically know a lot of drivers who have a mentality of a catch me if you can, you know, because they're already on the app, they're already able to make the money, they're already driving. They have all the emblems, the logos, the permits necessary to earn, and they don't think that your licensings are necessary, because how is Lyft gonna know? That's kind of the mentality. But I just wanted to give you some idea of who's driving our people around. It's us. It's me.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say also, after over 200, 200, I've driven over 200 people in the city of Las Vegas, my rating is still perfect.
All right, good to hear. Thank you very much for visiting with us.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for your time.
You did great. Anyone else wishing to address the city council under public comment at this time? Seeing none, other, seeing none, we will move on to council member recognition. Comments made by any individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Councilman Coffin, would you like to begin? Okay, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and good job today.
Thank you.
You steered the ship very well.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Saturday, January 23rd, the Discovery Children's Museum. The force will be strong at Discovery Children's Museum on Saturday, January 23rd, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, as fans experience the phenomenon that is Star Wars. Using their imagination, children and adults are invited to learn about Star Wars mythology in an educational setting. Instead of actual movie watching, there will be alien mask making, light saber dueling, and lessons on space, on, on space far away. Special appearances by UNLV's club. Soul Society of Light Saber Duelists will delight visitors as they watch the performing group in costume battle with crackling light sabers. So come on out on January 23rd, Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Secondly, Saturday, January 23rd, My Brothers Keeper. Please join me this Saturday, January 23rd, at the Doolittle Community Center from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, when the city of Las Vegas, in partnership with the Nevada Partners Incorporated, will be hosting the Las Vegas My Brothers Keeper's Resource Fair during Peace Week. The Las Vegas My Brothers Keeper is the proud, is proud to celebrate the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream by educating our youth. During the event, students and families are invited to come out and enjoy food, fun, and resources for the entire family. For more information, please contact Jordan Moore at 229-525423, 229-5423. On January 26th through the 31st, Riverdance, the international Irish dance phenomenon, is backed by popular demand in Riverdance, the 20th Anniversary World Tour. Drawing on Irish traditions, the combined talents of the performers propel Irish dancing and music into the present day, capturing the imagination of audiences across all ages and cultures in an innovative and exciting blend of dance, music, and song. For tickets, please visit www.thesmithcenter.com for more information. And of course, the Ward 5 Fishing Derby. Please come out and join me for one of my favorite events of the year. I will be hosting my third annual Free Fishing Derby at Lorenzi Park on Saturday, March 5th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, for youth and their mentors. We will be providing breakfast, lunch, and awards for the first fish caught, the smallest to include the largest. We will also have the Nevada Department of Wildlife leaning out, lending out 250 poles for all of those who are coming out to participate in the fishing derby. If you are interested in serving as a mentor or wish to register a large youth group, please call my office at 229-5443 for more information. And in addition, you may, of course, continue to follow me on social media, on Twitter, Facebook, and of course, my website at lasvegasnevada.gov/ward5, or just call me, 229-5443. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Good job. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
JAG Nevada Youth Career Empowerment Summit is being planned at Clark High School on February 27th, from 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. This event, which is open to all high school students, provides interactive workshops, open interviews, job placements, and internship opportunities. Students are encouraged to bring their resume and to dress in a professional attire, because the activities at this summit will help them have experience in applying for jobs and improve their abilities to do so. Breakfast and lunch will be provided, and students can enter a raffle for... Breakfast and lunch will be provided, and students can enter raffle for prizes. The city of Las Vegas, in partnership with Dress for Success, Nevada Job Connect, the Clark County School Police, and the Las Vegas Urban League are proud to sponsor this event, which helps high school students prepare for their future. And then, and I was thinking of all these strong, brave men up here. Anyway, we're having a polar bear plunge. Oh, yeah. On Saturday, February 13th, at 9:00 a.m. at Garcia Pool, and I will be helping handing out free hot chocolate. For every jumper who dares to take the slide into a crisp 50-degree water. The cost to observe this by our volunteers is $3 for advanced registration and $5 at the door on the day of the event. Advanced registration is taking place up the road at Pavilion Pool. So we expect to have a lot of people from that ward be coming down, too. All proceeds will be used to purchase swim attire for those who are not able to do so during the summer 2016 season. For more information, call 702-229-1488. I think it would be absolutely astounding to have all these guys who did that aerial trip and everything, yes, let's have you in this water plunge. And maybe you know some great basketball players, Ricky, they might want to do that.
Councilwoman?
Maybe a movie star.
Councilwoman, I will make this commitment to you, being that you're putting this out on a challenge.
Yes.
I will make this commitment, that I will donate $10 not to get in the water.
$10 not, they'll take it, okay.
Then you have it.
We got $10 donated already.
Councilwoman, he won't jump off the stratosphere for me either, so...
Oh, he has to do that either.
But, but, Councilman?
You did, you did, you support downtown.
Financially, I paid $1,000 not to jump off the stratosphere.
And that's a fine commitment, Councilman, thank you, though. The intercity scout units appreciate that.
Anyway, thank you very much.
And Councilwoman, I think Mr. Snell would like advanced tickets to the polar bear plunge.
Okay.
So...
All right.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go next with Ward Six announcements, and we'll save you, Councilman Beers, for the, for the trivia at the end.
I'm still working on the people who don't have proper swim attire.
Okay.
In my head.
A lot of things happen in Ward Six, so we'll just get ready.
It's not the way he's sinking, by the way.
I know, it's not.
No, these are little children whose families can't... Okay.
In Centennial Hills, Ward Six announcements, of course, I talked about this our last, our last city council meeting, Wednesday, January 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. the sheriff, and we got the fire chief coming, we got marshals coming, we got Red Cross, we got a whole bunch of people coming out for our Crime Prevention and Preparedness Night, and a great opportunity to talk to the sheriff and ask him what's happening with, with the police department, certainly our firefighters, we have Nevada Childseekers out there. That will be at the Centennial Hills Community Center, YMCA, Wednesday, January 27th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is free, so we like free things in the city of Las Vegas. And another great event happening, the Bridges Group Real Estate in Andro.com, people are presenting Centennial Hills Expo, Saturday, January 30th, at the Northwest Career and Technical Academy. That is also free admission to that. And they've actually got a couple of, of, of top, top headliners. Paul Scali's coming out, one of the comedians to the event. I know Christine Cramel will be representing Ward Six, Centennial Hills, for me. And Commissioner Brown will be out there also talking about things happening in his commissioned district, as we share, we share the, the area together. Again, a free event, come on out, Saturday, January 30th, 3 to 8, and the admission is free. Now, we are moving into February shortly, so we all have to be prepared for Valentine's Day, right? So I'm doing something a little different. We're doing the Sweets and Treats 5K One Mile Fun Run and Walk, Saturday, February 13th, at, of course, Floydland Park at Tulie Springs. Check-in starts at 9:00, runners start at 10:00. The first 100 registrants will receive a free t-shirt. We've got competition for all age groups, so plan on coming out and bring your dog, make sure they're leashed, that is a rule in the city of Las Vegas, and we'll have a lot of fun. So that's also a free event, come on out and see that. That starts at 9:00, 9:00 o'clock. In our continued relationship and partnership with Nevada Childseekers, unfortunately, we do have a missing young lady. Her name is Paola Mosa Gabrahal, I hope I pronounced that right. She's 16 years old, 5'6", about 180 pounds, she is Hispanic, no eyebrows drawn on, let's see, no eyebrows draws them on, okay. She was last seen in the area of Charleston Boulevard and 28th Street, wearing a black shirt, navy jeans, and black boots. She, she has a right, she has a tattoo on her right side on her chest, she may be carrying a backpack with her belongings. Please, if you recognize this young lady, know her whereabouts, contact the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers, 702-458-7009. And they have a very high percentage rate of getting these kids found. And I know the mayor asked me that last time, and I want to say, Christine, nod your head, is it 80% they find these kids and get them back to where they belong? So Christine's telling me, yes, that's 80%. Should you need to get in touch with me, it is easy to do. You can certainly go to lasvegasnevada.gov/ward6, and also find out all the great things we're doing. I am on Facebook, Twitter, and of course, you can always contact my office or send me an email. That wraps it up for Ward Six, and now I'm anticipating Councilman Beers. It's all yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is that your husband? Thank you for your service, sir. And thank you, ma'am, for all the things you do for the community in between trying to make a living. Yes, actually, it's not mine to say, but I would say yes. You have to ask him, actually.
We close public comment, but you are a hero, so come on up here and talk to us.
My name is Almofika King, but to my wife, we call each other Mr. and Mrs. King. I'm a disabled vet, so I'm 100% disabled. So I can't work anymore. I was kind of just going to take it back off her Lyft, and so they don't let us work. They kind of took our wartime, put us in a box, and threw us in the ocean, said, "Don't even open during war." But we signed up for Lyft, and we kind of really got into it. She's in it. She gets more compliments over the vehicle. My job is to keep the gas full and keep it clean. That's, I got the easy job. And over the holidays and the New Years and CES, she really had a ball. But we just wanted to also, you know, we run into a lot of people that don't take it as serious as she does, but that's why she has that 5.0 rating. And she is correct, there is a lot of people that look at the city and say, well, they're not going to come after me, and that does play a role. But for us, it benefits because, as if you're all familiar with how veterans are, we're on a set income. So the little bit that she pulls in without all the other stuff, it really helps, and it just makes it a little bit easier. So I just appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. King, for addressing us. We owe you a debt, and our gratitude for your serving our country and representing the freedoms that we so much enjoy as a country. So thank you to you for your service to this country.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I just wonder if I could have his wife's name again and telephone number before she leaves?
Okay, great, thank you. Councilman?
I kind of wish I needed a ride home.
You can leave your car here, she'll drive you.
I am responsible, sir, for my family's fueling and cleaning cleanliness of the vehicles, a task at which I hit 50% at best, so do not, do not take your duties lightly, I can tell you do not. In our continuing effort to reach out to citizens in Ward Two, we'll be doing Beers with Beers this Thursday. That would be tomorrow, as a matter of fact. We'll be out at Toro's Mexican Cantina, which is way out west Charleston in the Albertson Shopping Center. It's basically the last commercial property on your way out to Red Rock Canyon. And we'll be there from 5:30 to 7:30 tomorrow night, and then coffee with the councilmen. Next will be Friday, February 5th, we'll be out at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf at 9091 West Sahara Avenue at the Lakes Business Park from 7:30 to 9:00. On this day in music history, 52 years ago today, 1964, you're ready? Capitol Records released the first Big Beatles album, Meet the Beatles. Within a month, it was number-one bestselling album in the United States of America, where it stayed until it was displaced three months later by the Beatles' second album. Wow, what a year that was.
Yeah. Nice haircut.
And that's all we have.
All right, thank you very much.